Okay, we're on here.
Following the order, the meeting of the Township of Long Hill Planning Board for May 27th, 2025. The time is just a little bit past 7:30. I'll turn it over to Madam Secretary to read the announcements. Thank you.
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting or hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Ms. Still.
Present.
Mr. Hands. Committeeman Lavender is excused this evening. Mr. Lavarrario?
Here.
Ms. Ojens is excused this evening. Mr. Opalca?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you very much. So I first wanted to just start out the evening by thanking my vice chair for filling in for me in the last meeting. Did an excellent job. Thank you for facilitating the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I also wanted to, since we're in still the Memorial Day spirit, again, thank all of those heroes and also those who are continuing to serve our country on this very special week in commemoration of Memorial Day.
You're here.
Moving right along, item seven, meeting minutes, we're going to push. I know Madam Secretary is working diligently on those, and we'll have those ready for, I'm sure, our next meeting. So let's move right into item number eight. It's a resolution. This is a resolution that was drafted, and hopefully you've had a chance to review this, for the Black Hole State House, application number 24-16P. Are there any comments on this resolution?
Eligible members are Ms. Still, Mr. Hands, Mr. Lavarrario, and Chairman, Vice Chairman here? No. And Vice Chairman Jones and Chairman Richardson, sorry.
So I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think that the resolution does reflect the discussion that we had pretty thorough and I think accurate. There were, I found three, three things on page three that need to be corrected. In the third paragraph, whereas about halfway down, Roman numeral two, it says a gravel, gravel two-way driveway that spans from the eastern, it should be eastern. And then on the next line, I've, number four, it says a statute. It should say a statue.
A statute.
Right. And then-
For the bowl laws?
The, the last paragraph, the third line down, which starts with such relief is need, it should be needed to permit. And that's-
Very good.
-all I found.
Where was the last one? I'm sorry.
On-
Oh, neat. Oh, I see. Okay.
Needed.
Needed. I got you. Okay, thank you.
And that was literally the only thing I found in the whole document.
I'll take that.
Any others to folks?
Can I see your copy of the book?
Sure.
I have the same one that you do, because I had a couple of things that had to get filled in. Oh, the square footage of the sign, that never got filled in. On page four?
There were two lines.
Oh, yeah, it's a sort of.
Yeah.
But it, but there is something in the back which had-
But we have just a blank space.
Yeah, I figured somebody would fill that in after the first draft, I guess.
Right, but I thought it was in the back.
We do have it somewhere, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, it's six by two, isn't it?
It's on page eight, number 11, I think, as the measurements.
Page eight, number 11.
Six by two.
Six by thirty.
Oh, the sign now, there we go. Okay, great. Okay.
Twelve square feet.
Yeah. Okay, so we plug in twelve.
For the sign, it's 12 square feet, and for the bowl, it was approximately 25 square feet.
Right. Perfect. Okay, there we go. Okay. Apologize for that not being filled in. All right, so yeah, just at page four, those two blanks, 12 square feet and then 25 square feet, just for the, for the record. Okay.
Any other?
No.
edits, comments?
Oh, wait. How many board members were there? It was seven, right? Just want to make sure it makes, all right, no technical, just want to make sure the count's right. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, seven. I don't know why, somebody, Steve highlighted seven board members for whatever reason. I just wanted to make sure the number's good. I'm good.
Okay.
Do you have the right check marks in for the, the table at the end of who's eligible?
That's-
You have that, right. The eligibility and everything. Okay.
Deb, am I doing these, the boxes the right way? Or you saw it changing?
Yes and no. I, I'm OCD, so about the way things appear.
I've been trying to adapt to your style here.
I know. You're, you're getting better.
Okay. One of these days, I'll get it.
Your project. Oh, I just noticed something. Are we now the Board of Adjustment?
Oh, that's got to get fixed, too. Last page, page fifteen.
Chris, you copy and paste like I do.
Not all the time. There we go. Okay, we're good.
Are we, we've passed this resolution, so are we good? We need to pass it now as-
As amended.
Yeah, yeah. I think we had a motion, I don't think we had a vote on it.
I have a motion. I have a motion to accept the resolution.
The written resolution.
With the adjustments that we've discussed.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll second.
Adopt as amended.
Okay, so, thank you. David?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Lavarrario?
Yes.
Ms. Still?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, next, we have an application for a minor subdivision, lot 13302, lot 16-01, in zone R-2C on Delaware Avenue. This is application number 25-08P. This is an application that proposes to subdivide the property into two single-family residential properties. Is the applicant ready?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Richard Skolnick. I have my own law firm, and I'm representing Robert and Tamara Lure tonight. They're the new owners of this property. As you mentioned, it's block 13302, lot 16.01, and we're on an unimproved portion of Delaware Avenue. And there's a bit of a history to this 10.4 acre property. It's located in both the R2 and the C zones. We have about 7.57 acres in the R2 portion of the 10, 7.57 out of the 10+, and 2.86 in the C zone. That R2 zoning is essentially one acre zone, 45,000 square feet. The prior owner of the property had been before this board over a period of years, first for an eight-lot subdivision. That was withdrawn, and then there was a six-lot plan that was withdrawn, and that process started back in 2021. Finally, there was a third application for four lots, and this board approved that application for four lots in November of 2023. And then subsequent to that, in July 2024, my clients purchased the property, and we're back tonight for two building lots. There was some variance relief granted in November 2023 related to a critical lot area disturbance, buffer disturbance, and that relief is significantly reduced with the application that's before you tonight. And of course, we're going to go through the relief. The concept that's before you does not have any development at all in the conservation zone portion. That's the 2.86 acres. So we're not proposing to touch anything in the conservation zone. This application removes from the previous approval what I'm going to call the Delaware interconnect. There was discussion over, I believe each of the applications, about a municipal right-of-way to connect the two ends of Delaware. And the plan that's going to come before you leaves that to a municipal decision at some later point. The applicant is showing a driveway off of the two Delaware Avenue stubs, a private driveway, but the municipality, at some later point, if it wanted to, could build a road on, through on Delaware Avenue. But that is not before you tonight. The applicant is not proposing that. We have just one witness, a civil engineer and a planner. He handled the last application. That's Kelly O'Sutch. We'll qualify him as both the engineer and the planner. If needed, if needed, we have another engineer just on the stormwater aspects. But we received a favorable review letter, and we think we're okay on stormwater design, but we leave it to you if you need more details. And we have a separate engineer who has that expertise. Of course, my clients are here if there's any questions, but proposed residences. So there's not too much to add on that. We do have the reports of Mr. Vuich and Ms. Lahaney. We don't take any issues with anything in those reports. We'll cover most of the issues and questions that they've raised in our affirmative testimony, but of course, we'll address whatever you may have with that. So again, just the one witness will sort of do the chunk about the civil engineering and the design, have, I don't say a break, but a, a marker, and then to talk about the planning issues. But of course, there'll be some overlap, given the sort of very unique conditions, the topography that's out there, the layout that we have.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Could you do honors with just confirming notices?
Yes, absolutely. Didn't want to interject.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you for your overview.
Okay.
Okay. So as far as notice goes, I did review it, Mr. Chairman. I do deem it sufficient enough to give the board jurisdiction to hear and decide the case. The content was good. It was sent timely, sent to owner's property within 200 feet on May 14th, published in the Echo Sentinel on May 15th, both more than 10 days in advance of this evening. I think that's really for notice. With that, I can swear in for witness and our board professionals. All three of you, please raise your right hand, sir. Do all three of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, great. They're all sworn. I'm sure we'll get Mr. O'Sutch's credentials and have him qualified.
Battery just died on that.
Again?
Classic Long Hill microphone.
No, it's just, it's, it's getting worse and worse each time.
I was at the Board of Adjustment for two hearings here, and the battery died.
I'm going to have to go dig out batteries, because we're out over here. So I'll be right back.
You guys got to get like one of those little karaoke machines and just set that up. Okay.
Chairman, we're using the exact set of plans. I don't have to remark those, correct?
No, if there, if there was provided in the application.
While we're waiting, can you just confirm the last, well, there was no revision date on it, right? It's just the original set?
Yeah, they're, they're dated February 28, 2025.
Yep. No revisions?
No revisions.
Okay, awesome. Any exhibits you do plan on? Introduce Mr. Skolnick.
I have exhibits of the four-lot subdivision, should anything come up, not the full set, but if there's questions, we could introduce them at that point.
Okay, nothing. I figured we'd try to do some housekeeping while we're trying to kill some time here.
Yeah, I don't plan to introduce them, but-
Okay. All right, we'll hold off on them.
Just for clarity, you said February 28, 28?
28.
Thank you.
Yep. I mean, in the, while we're looking for batteries, could you just share this mic here and come up, just sit at the table?
I think this mic is stretched from here.
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll let it work.
Okay.
Perfect. We want to ensure that you're as uncomfortable as possible for your testimony, and then we'll begin.
As always.
You have the tape going, I guess?
Yes, we're still on the air.
Okay.
Yes, we're still on.
Okay. Your qualification, sir?
Yes. Kelly O'Sutch, I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a professional planner in the state of New Jersey, both in good standing. I've testified before various boards in both capacities throughout the state on subdivisions, site plans, similar land development applications. And as Mr. Skolnick noted, I testified before this board on this particular property during a prior application, as both a planner and an engineer.
And these other boards, and this board, you were recognized?
As a, as a professional and qualified, correct.
Okay, as both a planner and engineer?
Yes.
Everything's in good standing?
Yes.
Chairman, I submit Mr. O'Sutch as an expert in the fields of both civil engineering and planning for tonight's hearing.
I assume no objections, board?
No objections.
Okay, Kelly, I'm going to leave it to you to do the overview, and then, and then we'll go from there.
Sure. So the first board I have in front of you, sheet three of 19, which is the existing conditions plan within the overall subdivision set. It basically lays out the existing conditions or prior conditions of the property prior to any development that happened post the previous application being approved. For orientation here, north is facing towards the left-hand side of the plan.
Hold on one second.
No batteries. I have to text some people to see if I need a battery.
Well, we've figured out.
We're going to use the mic, Deb.
Again, north is towards the left-hand side of the plan, so east is to the top, west to the bottom, south to the right. The particular property is block 13302, lot 16.01 on the local tax maps. It is 10.44 acres, and the subject property is surrounded by different uses. So on the north, it's by a single family, as well as the, the west. To the south, it is surrounded by or adjacent to the Jersey Transit right-of-way, the railroad, and to the east by the Chestnut Bridge multifamily development. The existing property has a 10-foot wide stone drive that runs through the center of the property, and within that 10-foot wide stone drive, thereabouts, there's an existing sanitary sewer main that connects through from both sides of Delaware Avenue.
Kelly, while you have a break, Chairman, do you want, the members of the public, they know that they can come up further and look at this.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they want to. Do you guys, you can come up further if, if you want to. It's going to be a little hard to show them the plans, but we can try. If you guys want to come up, you're allowed to, to sort of see what's going on.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just over.
Is that okay, Chairman?
Yes.
You can actually turn it this way. We have the plans in front of us.
Yeah. So Kelly, would you turn it a little bit? Can't stand right next to them exactly, but, sir, but you're allowed to look at it, for sure. Chairman, I hope that's okay. I've been at this, I've been at this a little bit. So they're way back there, not really understanding what's going to happen for the next half an hour, 40 minutes, without looking at the drawing.
Perfect.
Okay? Okay, you just have to slide back a, folks, you got to slide back a little bit. I, either, we'll have a chance for, you'll have a chance for this when we take a break to, to look. We'll get there in a second, okay? I hope I didn't screw it up, Chairman, here, but, okay, Kelly.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, it's also on the website. If someone went to the Long Hill Township website, went to planning board, went to meetings, you can see the agenda with all the maps there on the phone.
Especially if you're joining via Zoom.
Okay. That, Chairman, I'm sorry. Thank you for, I, I think it makes better for everybody, better for everybody. Okay.
So as Mr. Skolnick noted, this property is very unique. There's a lot of different qualities and existing features on this property that are unique to this property and not something that you typically see anywhere within the state, but specifically within Long Hill as well. Namely, which I kind of alluded to, is that the property abuts a public road Delaware Ave on two sides of the property, but the public road does not connect through the property. It just stops on either side. Additionally, there's an existing easement that runs through that property. It's a utility easement that coincides with that sanitary sewer main, which I indicated runs through the section of that property. Additionally, this property has two different zones, which Mr. Skolnick noted. There's the R2 zone, which is the majority of the property, and 7.57 acres of the property are within that R2 zone. And that, again, is kind of, if you follow my pointer here, that's really focused on generally the northern portion and some of the southern portion of the property. The C zone, or the conservation zone, is really focused all the way down in the furthest part of the south of the property along that DOT right-of-way.
Okay. And we're not proposing any development in the C?
And we are not proposing anything in the C zone. The area of that C zone on the property is currently 2.86 acres. The C zone requirement is three acres, so it's an existing non-conforming condition. Basically, the existing property doesn't have enough area within the C zone than what the ordinance requires.
So the property is unique in a, in another way, in that it, it's part of two different zones?
Correct.
Okay.
Additionally, based on that easement bisecting the property, the property is, is limited on where you can and cannot develop it because it is constrained based on this existing utility easement that runs through the property, basically bisecting the property into two separate areas, the north and the south section, as I'll call them. So the northern section of the property, it was wooded, and you can kind of see what we show is this clouded line was the wooded portion of the property.
That's to the left, north to the left.
It's wooded throughout the entire property, but north is on the left that I'm talking about right now. So it was wooded all the way up to that stone drive. Since this appro, or since the four-lot subdivision approval under the prior application, the prior owner did clear the lot up to their approved limited disturbance. And we'll go through that later on, while we show what the difference is of limited disturbance from that subdivision to what's being proposed here. Further on that northern portion of the property, the relative topography on that portion of the property is gradual. There's a high point along the western property boundary, and water or topography generally loses grade gradually towards the eastern portion of the property. On that portion of the property, the northern portion again, as I call it, there's no regulated slopes, no slopes greater than 15%, which the township has a critical slope ordinance. So that portion of the property, there's nothing on it, as far as that goes. On the southern portion of the property, again, prior to the previous approval, there was, it was wooded along the edge of the stone drive again, and all the way back to the rear along the DOT right-of-way. This section of the property, however, does have some significant topographic relief, and it starts relatively gradual at the, the edge of the roadway and 100 feet into the property or off the, the easement area, and then it significantly drops, and there's a significant topographic change. And that portion of the property does have critical areas and critical slopes greater than 15% by the ordinance. And then as you get further back to the south of the property, there's state-regulated areas for wetlands, flood hazard areas, well and transition areas. And so virtually, the majority of the C zone is encumbered within state-regulated areas, and then some of the state-regulated areas even go beyond where the C zone limit is into the R2 zone. So for lack of a better term, the majority of the southern portion of this property is undevelopable from both the, the C zone requirements and the state regulations for the state-regulated areas. So this is sheet four, which is the existing critical area plan. And just as I alluded to, this sheet illustrates what we have measured as the critical areas on the southern portion of the property. So the gray hatching, as I call it, or gray solid lines, are areas that measure greater than 15% as measured on the current survey that we have of the property. We are being ultra-conservative, and this came up again during the prior application, based on the way the ordinance is written, the critical slopes are 15% over a certain elevation drop, and I believe it's 10 feet of elevation drop. We've just done it over any drop. So we're being ultra-conservative and not taking it to the letter of the ordinance and kind of dotting our Ts and crossing our Is on what we're labeling as critical areas. In addition to that, the local ordinance has a 25-foot buffer off the critical areas for any structure in a side yard, and a 25, or a 50-foot buffer for any structure in a front yard. And those are illustrated as these two dashed lines that kind of coincide and run parallel to the, the critical slopes on property. So again, the, what's being illustrated on this plan here is that the southern portion of the property is, got critical slopes and is where kind of the heavy regulated areas of the property are located, whereas the north section is relatively unencumbered as far as local and state-regulated. So what's being proposed here? Sheet five of plans, this is entitled the Minor Subdivision Plan.
Okay, so we're on sheet five now?
Sheet five.
Got everybody over there. Okay.
The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two separate lots, and we have them labeled as 16.011 and 16.012. And we followed this based on the nomenclature that was provided by the tax assessor during the four-lot subdivision, but I think there was a comment in the engineer's letter of confirming with the tax assessor during this application, and we certainly would do that. 16.011 I will consider as namely the north portion of the property. However, a portion of it comes down and utilizes part of the second, or the, the C section and the western portion of this section of the southern one. 16.012 follows the, the easement line, comes down, and makes a relative rectangular area on the eastern portion of the property. the eastern portion of the property. The site, as I noted, has access points currently on two public... Two stubs of a public road, which is Delaware Ave. 16.012 is proposed to be accessed via the eastern portion of Delaware Ave or of the property, and 16.011 is proposed to be accessed via the western portion of the property along Delaware Ave. So there would be an access point to this driveway to this house here and an access point to this house kind of here. And I know there's questions and kind of concerns potentially from members of the board on how this is going to operate. The intent is to have these look like residential drives. They're not going to look like a road coming through. So the width of these is much less than the roadway. The roadway is 30 feet wide. These are going to be significantly less than 30 feet wide, so as you come up to it, it looks like you're going into a residential drive. Further, it's not running straight through that connects. It comes in and purposely kind of turns off in either direction so that there is no illusion of a connection through to Delaware Ave. So I think the way we've designed this, it makes sense, and it will eliminate any concern from the public trying to utilize this as a public road between the two properties. So areas, 16.011 is proposed as 6.83 acres, and of that, 5.05 acres are in the R2 zone and 1.78 acres are in the C-zone. And again, that's just based on the geometry that we're showing here, and a portion of this C-zone is just being captured here. So again, we need relief from the amount of area within the C-zone, but again, it's the overall property doesn't have enough area within the C-zone, so as we subdivide these two properties, no matter what, they're not going to have enough area within the C-zone.
But nothing's going on in the C-zone, as we said.
Correct.
So this... The lot to the left, 011, at the end of the day, where the house is going, it's a R2, so that's about a one-acre zoning, and you're going to end up with 6.83 acres.
Correct.
Overall, so close to seven times what's contemplated for a reasonable lot size in the R2.
Correct.
Lot 011 on the left, I'm going to call it, the northerly lot.
Correct.
Okay, and there's relief there because we're in two zones. Arguably, relief is needed. We're not doing anything in the C-zone exactly.
Correct.
We have enough territory in the R-zone just for a house in the R-zone by a wide margin.
Correct.
Okay.
In addition to the relief for the C-zone and the area of the C-zone, 16.011 would also need the lot width relief. And so your lot width, the way the ordinance is written and the way we understand it, is you're measured along the frontage of the public road. So again, the only portion of frontage along the public road here is along Delaware Ave, and that width is 51.55 feet. So it's substandard where the requirement is 150 feet, but again, this is kind of a unique situation where we're tying in on the public road, and that's the only frontage this portion of the property has.
We have, in terms of frontage normally being thought of as lot width, we have the rest of the lot width to sort of lay out the house. It's not like it's a house being put on a 50-foot-wide house.
Correct.
Right, or a house being put on a 50-foot-wide lot. That's not what's happening here, but again, due to the unique nature of Delaware and how this is configured, we technically need that relief.
Correct.
Okay. We have that on the northern terminus also. Could you just go over that?
Correct. So yeah, as we go over to 16.012, lot area on that area... Or on that lot is 3.6 acres. 2.52 acres would be in the R2 zone, and the remaining 1.08 acres would be in the C-zone. So again, same C-zone relief for not having enough area within that property. And again, this property is kind of just a more of a rectangular shape property here. And again, same relief for the frontage or the lot width. This lot proposes 33.41 feet of frontage along the public road or Delaware Ave. And again, from the actual intent of the ordinance, I believe the lot width is more than enough to meet the intent of the ordinance as far as if you interpreted it along the center line of the easement that runs through the property. However, if you're reading it from the actual frontage on the road, the relief is necessary. So in addition to the utility easement that runs through the property currently, the applicant is also proposing to connect, based on comments they received from New Jersey American Water, to connect the water main through the property that would connect basically dead... There's two dead-ended stubs on either side of Delaware Ave of the water line in addition to the actual road. And so they would add an additional easement through the property for both the sanitary and the water line extension that would be connecting the water line through the property.
And this is going to be on public sewer? You had conversations with New Jersey American Water?
Yeah, so the property will... Has received, will serve letters for both sanitary sewer and water from New Jersey American. New Jersey American, specifically with the sewer, we know there's been a ban in the township for a very long time. They've acknowledged that these two properties have the right to connect without any sewer service amendment. Under the state TWA rules, they have the right to connect these two properties. And we have that in writing, and that's been submitted to the board's engineer and I believe to the rest of the board as part of the application process. All right, so this is Sheet 6 of the plans. It's the proposed critical area impact plan. So as the name indicates, we're showing the proposed impacts of the critical areas on the site. And as I alluded to, on 16.011, there really is no impact as far as where the structure's being proposed to any critical slopes on the property. However, when you get to 16.012, where we anticipate the structure to go within the buildable areas, the relatively gradual grade, I'll call it, off of that easement area before you really get into the steep slope areas, there's very minimal area where you can meet the setback requirements from the side yard and the easement and build a structure without impacting, at the very least, the buffers, but also the actual critical slopes themselves. So we are asking for relief from Section 142.1A and 142.1B on that lot. And it's specifically for a structure within a critical slope and a structure affecting the critical slope buffers. One thing worth noting here is the previous application that was before this board, there were two lots that were being proposed on this. Again, I'll call it the southern portion of the property. And during that application, both of those lots were proposing structures that were within the critical slopes, and the board granted relief as part of that application for those structures within those critical slopes. I know there's no quantifiable numbers that the board necessarily puts into these, but I think it's worth kind of understanding the differences in the proposed disturbances that were previously anticipated and shown on the old plans versus what's being proposed here within the critical slopes specifically. So the old project had approximately 4,800 square feet of disturbance within the critical slope.
This is the critical slope. We're going to talk about the buffers separately.
Correct.
Okay, so first, we're talking about some disturbance and show the board, you know, where that is, if you would.
Yeah, so the critical slope disturbance that we're proposing specifically on this lot is in this one little corner. There's like a little odd, trapped little shape, and that's about 1,300 square feet. So we went from 4,800 square feet down to 1,300 square feet. So there's about 3,500 square feet of disturbance within the critical slope that's being decreased from the prior approval to what we're proposing here.
Okay, so it's about, you know, you're about one quarter, 1,300 over 4,800, so to say, you know, approximately.
And then, so from the 25-foot buffer, the old project proposed about 13,900 square feet of disturbance, and this particular application's only proposing 9,300. So again, like a 4,600 square foot reduction in that 25-foot critical slope buffer. And then when you get to the 50-foot buffer, the old plan was about 15,700 square feet, and this proposed is about 13,900. So again, another 1,800 square feet of reduction in disturbance. So I think while the numbers don't necessarily hold weight, I think the idea that there's a significant reduction in these disturbances should make the board, I think, feel a little bit more comfortable that what's being proposed here is less invasive and affecting the critical slopes and the... What's the right word? The critical slopes and the areas of the township that we're trying to preserve by protecting these critical slopes.
Okay, Kelly, let's just talk a little bit. The municipal land use law, the C1 variance, that group of reasons that we could present to the board on the C1 criteria. It talks about practical difficulties due to a physical feature.
Yes.
So is there any way to get a house, I'm going to call it, on sort of the south side of Delaware Avenue without having at least some disturbance? And can you just talk about that a little bit in your efforts? Where are you going to put the house? Is it possible to get even a single house? And what kind of difficulties would any reasonable development in a one-acre zone sort of have here?
So thanks for reminding me.
Okay. That's what I'm here for.
We did analyze previously, there's one little corner in this far southern portion that's not within a critical buffer or a state-regulated area. We could potentially fit a house here. However, you are now running a driveway all the way through the critical slope, hanging a structure right along the property to the neighbors and right along the regulated area with the state. I personally don't think that's a good location. I think the right location, the less invasive location, is closer to the center of this property, even if it is impacting the minor areas of the critical slopes.
Is it possible to get a house on the south side of Delaware without having some impact on critical areas and critical buffers?
I don't see a way that you could grade the property and not impact the critical slopes and get a reasonable-sized house. The ordinance required, I believe it's a minimum of a 1,500 square foot footprint, and there's a floor area minimum requirement. To get a house that size, there's no way to do it, grade the property, grade the improvements of the property, the stormwater management that's associated with it, and not impact the critical slopes.
Okay, so just to repeat here a couple of times here, I hope the board bears with me and the public, we got a couple very unique sort of things here. We have the existing stubs of Delaware Avenue.
Correct.
And the town has a right, the governing body, not this board, but the governing body, can make that into a street if it wants to.
That's my understanding.
Right, so you can't put a house where that goes. You got to, right? You got to deal with that as an existing physical feature of what's going on here.
Correct.
Okay, and then you got the hilly topography, right? These steep slopes, so you got to deal with that as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then to a degree, we have the split lot zoning, and we're addressing that by staying off the conservation zone altogether.
The conservation zone, and in addition to that, all the state-regulated areas that are on the property, we're trying to stay away from.
So as a design engineer, you're trying to balance all these things.
Correct.
And get the owner to be able to build...
A reasonable property.
Right, and let's just forget about the C-zone for a while, the two and a half acres. You got 7.6 acres in the R. That's one acre zoning. So if we just divide it by seven, by one, you know, you're talking about a gross of around seven. We're looking at two houses, and that's just not even giving any credit for that extra C. So we're going two, and at least as a gross number, seven could be some sort of starting point, at least arguably, at least arguably to look at. And again, we're from something that was approved by the board, we're reducing these impacts quite a bit, certainly in that critical area. Forget about the buffers. The critical area goes from 4,800 to 1,300.
Further to the proposed impacts of the critical area, we are not seeking relief from the contiguous non-critical area requirements for either lot. We do meet that requirement, and we are also not seeking relief from the maximum impervious surface of non-critical areas on either lot. We're 70% is the max. We believe that these fully-developed properties will be within the limits of those two sections of that ordinance.
Okay, so those are other indicia, so to speak, of whether too much is going on.
Correct.
Right? Is overdevelopment because you can look at impervious, you could look at contiguous areas, non-critical, and we can comply with those. So those are some indication that not too much is happening here.
Correct.
In simple terms.
I like simple. All right, the grading plan.
What sheet are we?
Sheet 7 of 19. It's entitled the grading plan. So this illustrates the proposed grading, the proposed change in topography of the site to accommodate the proposed development of the subdivision. We've designed this in a way to construct a single-family house on 1611 and mimic the relative drainage patterns that I previously testified to in the existing conditions. So the high spot is still along this property boundary, and the water generally runs towards the eastern boundary here. And then again, for 16.012, there's a high point up here, and the water kind of runs down towards the southern end, down through the flood plain and along the DOT right away. So again, we're mimicking the existing drainage patterns and trying to limit as much as possible the earthwork associated with that to make these properties viable to live and have a house.
And you met with Mr. Vuich's office pre-submital to...
Yes.
You know, get a sense of what it might be reviewed like?
I have James from my office that could, if needed, go through detailed parts of the stormwater management, but I will say, the proposed project, even the prior project, went over the threshold of what is considered a major stormwater development. So it was over an acre, disturbance previously proposed that actually happened when he cleared the lot. We've designed the stormwater system to account for the pre-existing conditions as if the property was still fully wooded, and it meets the requirements of the stormwater management for the overall property. I believe Joe's letter basically says he's reviewed the stormwater, and he has no issues with it, but I don't want to speak for him, but that's basically what it said. And to Mr. Skolnick's point, our office had multiple meetings with Mr. Vuich during the design process to kind of vet through these stormwater issues because we kind of knew of the issues on the prior application, and we were trying to get ahead of them on this application.
Far as you are aware, full compliance, local, state stormwater management?
Yes.
There is some discussion that we're going to need to submit an operations manual. It's become customary now. No issues with that?
Yeah, we have no issues with complying with providing the maintenance manual. I think we've provided some of it, but there's additional review that needs to be done by the board and board's engineer, town engineer, all that we take no objection to, and the filing of it within the deed is state-required, so we take no objection to that.
Okay, so the homeowners here are ultimately going to be responsible for doing whatever maintenance, changing the filters, doing an annual maintenance check and so on.
Yeah, so there is, the way that the stormwater is designed, there is going to be some cross drainage, I'll call it, between the two properties. So there's going to be some agreement between the two properties. The owner currently is going to be within the family, own both properties, but there is going to be a legal mechanism created should they sell one of the properties in the future, that there is a joint relationship on the maintenance and who's responsible for what and how that maintenance gets maintained.
So it's handled if, even though there's a current intent that both houses be in the same family, of course, that can change over time.
Correct.
And the maintenance still has to go on, so that's going to be a recorded document.
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, is that going to be recorded on deed or...
You know, that's a deed tab, but yeah, it would be in the... It'd be somewhere in the deed, some sort of deed restriction to make sure that there's recorded obligations, the town's probably going to be able to step in if something doesn't occur, but that's what's anticipated here.
The maintenance manual is required to be filed within the deed, and that's going to basically spell out all the maintenance requirements. going to basically spell out all the maintenance requirements and who's responsible for what portion of the various BMPs proposed. So I think that kind of answers your question.
So Chairman, as you know, we have 190 days, if, if we do get approved, to record the minor subdivision. But there's a lot of work in terms of those deeds, so who knows? We may be back, but it'll be sort of processing that. The DEP has become very attuned to every town that I go, what's happening with the, the maintenance manuals to make sure that that gets taken. But the current intent is our clients are going to have one house, the parents, another, but that could change, of course, you know, at some point in time. So that has to be handled.
I'll just add, it's like fairly, very fairly common to see this. Typically, like, you know, multi, probably with more lots, at least like four or five, you'll see like a, we'll set up like a homeowners association, have a player of responsibility. I don't think it's really necessary here, because there's only two, two lots resulting, but it is fairly common to see these types of agreements.
All right. So I brought up sheet 13 of the plan set, which is the landscape plan. And as I alluded to previously, the prior owner of the property had cleared portions of the property already, based on his limited disturbance that was approved by his board as part of the four lot subdivision in 2020. So what we're proposing is in areas that are already cleared, that we don't necessarily intend to further disturb or develop further on, we're intending to fill back in some of those areas with additional vegetation, trees, and landscaping. In addition to that, we're also trying to provide a significant buffer along the edge of the property nearest the single-family homes, as well as fill in the gaps of the buffer that's going to be maintained on the Chestnut Ridge portion along the eastern portion of the property. So I think the, while the, the prior owner did what they could, I think this applicant is doing above and beyond what they're required to do, based on the ordinance, because the way I read the ordinance is you're, any disturbance or tree removal associated with a subdivision or a site plan is exempt from any tree replacement ordinance. Even though they're exempt, they're trying to go above and beyond and provide some additional buffer back in to the neighbors as part of this project for some of the, for lack of a better term, sins of the past, I'll call it.
Opportunity for improved zoning, if we want to put it into C2 criteria.
Correct.
Do we call it that?
We can call it that.
An opportunity to benefit the public with an improved zoning option and, and serve one of those goals of zoning.
That's correct. That kind of?
Thank you for agreeing with me on that one.
That concludes the direct on the engineering, so I don't know if you want me to wait before I go to planning and answer questions or?
Okay. Just to pick up a couple things from Mr. Vuich's report, I'm not sure I'm getting the pronunciation right. Do I have it right?
That's, that's correct.
I thought I had it. Okay, for Joe.
Yep.
Okay. First, no issues with anything that's in there?
No, he's, we reviewed the, the memo that was dated, today's date, May 27th.
Chairman, we may have a, a very slight issue with the review of the easement by both the board engineer and the town engineer, and the board attorney and the town planner. That seems like quite a bit of review, four reviews. But we'll leave it to you, that whether, you know, one of each might be sufficient to protect the municipality. That was the only thing. We have the will serve letters on both water and sewer?
Yes.
The other approvals are sort of in gear or ready?
Right. So in his list under section five, he lists a few different other agency approvals and asking for status of those. So the Morris County Planning Board, we filed for that application, they sent an email basically saying, we're exempt. The applicant has to provide a $100 check, and we'll get the actual physical paper that says we're exempt. So that's pending, should be in very soon. Morris County Soil Conservation District, they've reviewed and approved and issued a permit for the proposed disturbance associated with the grading plan. They've also reviewed the stormwater management, had no comments on the stormwater. NJDEP, Division of Water Quality, as part of that Soil Conservation District permit, they gave us a request for authorization permit. So right as the applicant is ready to go to construction, they file that with the DEP online. It's an instant permit. That'll happen prior to construction. And then the last two, I think, on his, or the next two, 5-4 and 5-5, are New Jersey American. As I testified to, we do have will serve letters in hand from New Jersey American for both water and sewer on the property. And then 5-6, you get down to the Division of Land Use Regulation with the DEP, and since we are not impacting any of the state-regulated freshwater wetlands, wetland transition areas, or the flood hazard areas, there's no further permitting needed with those offices. And Mr. Vuich's letter basically states that.
So we're pretty far down the line in terms of other permits, and, and so they've been moving on a, a parallel track?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Lahaney asks, and I want to come back to the issue of sort of the circulation between the two lots. She asked, does 16.012 have access to go across 16.011? Can you bring up the different drawing there that shows that a little bit better, maybe five?
Just to clarify, did you want to break this down into two parts, or do you feel like it's better to integrate your planning and civil design?
We're doing all the engineering, and then we'll, we gotta, you know, we've worked in a bit of the planning.
Initially, you had requested to kind of break it down into two parts, and we could do it that way, but if, it, it may be more efficient if you are able to address the planning comments, and then we can turn it into a question.
Fair enough.
It's up to you. I don't want to dictate.
Okay. Ms. Lahaney's comments are, they're not planning testimony-type comments, they're just, how's this going to work with, with, with the interconnects? Because it, it's reasonable. We, we appreciate there is uniqueness here. We think it's a good solution with only having two lots in a sort of rural area. We hope the neighbors are generally happy that it's down to two lots and that's?
I think you have some neighbors that will?
We'll see what they have to say. But let's just talk about sort of how the owner is anticipating this interconnect situation.
Right. So 16.012 has access egress and ingress via the eastern portion of the property. 16.011 has access ingress and egress via, via the western portion of the property along Delaware Ave. What the applicant is proposing is this 12-foot-wide connection on 16.011 that would tie in with the driveway access on 16.012, so that 16.011 could also access ingress and egress to the eastern portion of the property. The intent is not to necessarily have 16.012 utilize this, it's really for 16.011. And again, the current owner, owners of the property will have family operating, living in the two properties, so it won't be an issue now. But there will be some legal agreement made prior to any, you know, resolution compliance that basically states what this agreement is. And then if there is any further sale of this property, that would be subject to any review of the potential buyer and their term in negotiations, as far as that.
So, so right now at least, and again, this could change in the years in the future, 16.012, that's going to be for Grandma and Grandpa, and they're certainly going to be able to drive over or walk over to 16.01 when they want. But their legal access will be to go in the easterly direction.
Correct.
That's what's contemplated. 16.011 by the applicants, they could go out either way? Is that what's contemplated?
That's the intent. Correct.
Okay. And, you know, that, if they sell off 16.012 in the future, they might not be so inclined to have a new owner, not family, come across the property, but there'd be access to a public street. We, oh, by the way, we met with the fire department also?
Yes. My understanding is the applicant met with the fire official, emergency vehicle officials, and they reviewed the plan and had no issues with the, the layout of the?
Okay. That was my brilliant contribution. You better talk to the fire people. This is a little bit different than they normally see. And you could report back from the client that they were okay, we haven't received any review letters after sixty, after 60-plus days from, from the fire department, we're happy to deal with that.
Correct.
Okay. There's an issue of, you know, some high school, some troublemaking high school kid like I was?
We can ask all those guys.
Trying to sort of get through here, and, and, you know, what have we talked about? And what, what's the, the view of the developer on, on how this is going to work vis-à-vis Delaware?
I tried to allude to this in my direct, but basically, this is going to look like a private traffic. It's not going to look like a road coming through. So the intent is to keep this much narrower than the roadway on both sides, and you come in and you're directly turning on both properties into the property. You're not driving in hundreds of feet that would illustrate a road. That's the general intent. The applicants are, you know, if this becomes an issue, they're thinking of putting up, you know, big pillars on either side of the driveway that should kind of make it a grand entrance to a, to a private property. Again, illustrating that this is not a road, it's not a, a drive-through. So that's a potential additional thing they could add. If, for some reason, this becomes an actual problem, the next step would be adding signage, something that basically says, don't be, you can't drive through our property, it's not, it's not open access. And if, God forbid, that's still an issue, worst case would be put up some type of gate, and then that gate would have the ability for emergency vehicles to either blow through the gate or have some type of Knox box lock that they can unlock, God forbid there was an emergency and they had to utilize this, this portion of the property.
So from a design standpoint, it's going to feel very much like a dead end, or two dead ends with, with, with significant houses, but at the end of a dead-end street?
Yeah.
Basically, that's the concept, right?
And that was, yeah, that was purposeful in the design. We heard the public during the previous application, I would say the majority of the public that I heard did not want the road coming through. So in doing that, we're trying to almost create these two dead-end portions of the property, or of Delaware Ave, on this property that further align with at least the public that I heard two and a half years ago. And we're going from four lots, four houses, to two. So we're cutting the, the density in half.
You took a look at the master plan? That doesn't call for the Delaware Ave interconnect anymore, actually?
Yeah, I didn't fully get into my planning here, but I, I can bring this up.
Okay. It's a good segue.
Yeah, it is. A lot of my argument as a planner on the previous application on why Delaware Ave needed to connect through was, at the time of that application, the 1996 master plan was still relatively in effect, and the circulation element of that master plan still noted that Delaware Ave has been contemplated and needs to go through. Since then, the 2023 master plan has been revised and adopted, and I read through the circulation plan of that, and I don't see any mention of Delaware Avenue being connected through. So while it's not a governing document, it is a master plan. It's, it's what the town sees for the future. So there clearly was a change in view from the township, or at least in my opinion, township, that they no longer envision this road connecting. Otherwise, it wouldn't have been pulled from the master plan in its newest version.
But the town still has the legal right to do it. They have a, some sort of right-of-way document, easement document. They could if they wanted to.
They could if they wanted to.
And there's nothing that we're doing here that would prevent them from doing that. That's a risk that the owner is taking here.
Correct. And I think further to the point of the township looking to potentially void these, I'll call them dead-ended areas, is another goal of the master plan that was written into this 2023 master plan was finding what they call paper streets and vacating them if there was no intent to develop these. So if this gets approved, this family builds their dream home, dream homes, there's the ability for the town to come in and, again, kind of correct the sins of the past and vacate that thought of an idea in the future. And again, that's kind of written into the, the newest version of the master plan.
If it wants to, that's not?
If they want to.
If it's not to, this, this, this plan has to stand on its, on a sound planning by itself.
Correct.
But there's nothing we're doing here that impedes those other legal rights that are out there. And the town, maybe they've changed their mind once, they change their mind again, this plan can accommodate that. And that, that was a design challenge that you had.
Correct.
And, you know, we'll make an argument, Chairman, that there's a lot of things to balance here. Getting lower density, dealing with those critical areas, dealing with the legal rights of Delaware Avenue, and we're going to suggest that this is a reasonable accommodation, and certainly less significant than a prior valid approval that could still be built on today, because we're, we're, we're still in the window over there. So, okay. I, Chairman, thank you. I like delved into argument a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Okay. But we wanted to go that, you wanted?
Go fully for the planning, Alan?
Yeah. I think it's a good, those were, those were most of the issues. I stole your professionals' fire, but mostly, not, not, not only, they'll come up with something, I'm sure.
Before you go there, did you have any comments from an engineering perspective in response to what you've heard?
No, I mean, I, I listened to the testimony and, and, you know, reviewed the application, and I reviewed Joe's report, visited the site, and, you know, I do agree with Joe's comments from a professional and personal standpoint, that the stormwater design meets the stormwater regulations. And based on the testimony that I heard, it, the applicant is willing to address any of the other comments in our previous memo, review memo regarding the application.
Good. So you want to address the plan?
Okay, Kelly, I know we touched a lot, but maybe you could sort of wrap it up in terms of positive and negative on that C1 basket of reasons that we're allowed to present, and also the C2. These are the letters of the statute that tell us what kind of proof we're allowed to present to the board. There's, there's like sort of baskets of certain types of reasons.
So I think, before I even fully get into that, I just want to kind of touch on, I think, to kind of paint a picture here for the board. I read through the land use ordinance, the purpose of the land use ordinance and their goals. Specifically, an overall goal of land use ordinance is to conserve, enhance, and enhance the essential rural character of Long Hill Township in order to best provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of township residents. B, to maintain the township's identity as a fundamentally low-density community and to ensure that future development is compatible with the sensitive areas, sensitive to existing areas in the established development. And then F, to preserve, protect, and enhance natural resources of the township and to make environmental issues a central part of planning process in, in Long Hill. And I think those are important to understand as we get into the planning here, that these are core goals of land use ordinance. And I think some of the things that we've done in this design specifically hit on some of those, those goals within the ordinance, specifically the rural character. I think the way that the site kind of lays out, you come in and you kind of like meander into a rural, single-family property rather than have a road kind of running through, and, for lack of a better term, connecting the two portions of Delaware Ave that are now kind of suburbanized and rural instead of making it a more connected development. B, to maintain the fundamentally low density. As Mr. Skolnick noted, based on the R2 zone, just on a, a high-level density, we could get way more density out of this project, or property. This board previously approved a four-lot subdivision. The applicant's providing, proposing only two single-family lots. So the low density is significant, you know, we've cut it in half from what was previously approved, and probably even more than half of what we could potentially get out of the property based on the overall zone. And then to preserve and protect the natural resources. Again, on the southern portion of this property, there's a ton of critical areas, state-regulated areas, wetlands, transition areas, flood hazard. We're staying away from that, we're preserving those areas, we're not touching them as part of the development, and there's no future plans as part of this development to impact those areas. So I think it's just important to kind of remember all those as we get into the planning here. The housing goal, housing goals of land use ordinance, to conserve, enhance the essential rural and residential character. That's basically verbatim taking the overall land use goals and repeating. And then same thing with to maintain the township's identity as a fundamentally low-density residential community. I think it's just carrying that, that sediment throughout. So the variance relief that we're seeking, from section 131 of the bulk requirements, So the variance relief that we're seeking, from section 131 of the bulk requirements, the lot width of the R2 zone where 150 is required, the C-zone requires 250 feet. So lot 16.011, we are, we are proposing 51.55 feet. 16.012, we are proposing 33.41 feet. So we're seeking relief from that section of the bulk requirements.
And that's driven primarily by coming off of existing Delaware.
Correct, the size of the stubs that exist. The C-zone minimum lot area, the overall lot area of the property within the C-zone is 2.86 acres. It doesn't meet the three-acre requirement. We are splitting that up to facilitate the two lots being proposed. So they are, in fact, both substandard from the three-acre minimum because there's no way to get subdividing and adding areas, so.
But that's a unique feature of the split-lot zoning.
That's correct.
In a way, that sort of makes this very unfair. But we're not doing anything in the C, as I think we've driven home.
Correct, so 16.011, 1.78 acres are proposed within the C-zone.
What do we have total?
2.86 acres. And for 16.012, 1.08 acres are proposed within the C-zone.
So if we use that R2 zoning and the one-acre target, we're, both lots are obviously way over.
Way over.
Yeah, and we got 10 acres altogether, we're doing two houses on a, on a bulk basis.
Correct. So in addition to the bulk requirements, we are seeking relief from the critical areas. 142.1A, where no principal building, accessory building, parking area, pool, tennis court, patio, deck, any accessory structure shall be located in whole or in part within a critical area. So the applicant's seeking relief on lot 16.012 for the future lot development of that lot impacting those critical zones.
Okay, and that, the disturbance there is 1,294 square feet? Is that the final number there? So Mr. Sobieski has it?
Yeah.
1,294, that's the disturbance to the critical area, that's down from 4,838.
Correct. 142.1D, all lots shall provide a principal building setback of at least 50 feet from any critical area located in the front yard or rear yard of the lot and a 25 feet from any critical area located in the side yard of the lot. And again, we're asking for relief on lot 16.012 for this condition. And again, as Mr. Skolnick, as I previously testified to, there's a significant decrease in the amount of disturbance being proposed as well as previously approved by the board.
Okay, and the disturbance within the 25-foot buffer, the new total is 92.99.
Correct.
And that's down from 13,896.
Yep.
13,896, and that's obviously primarily driven by the unique topographical conditions and the need to find the best location for the one house on the south side of Delaware. Okay?
That's correct.
Right, and basically without that, you're forced to go way back. Your, your engineering view, that'd be a worse spot.
It, it would certainly be a worse spot, and while it would be out of the critical slope, you would be impacting more critical slopes to get to that area.
So basically on that, that southerly side of the existing right-of-way, you can't, you can't, you can't get a house without some element of disturbance of critical area, 25-foot buffer and 50-foot buffer.
Correct.
And this, and in your engineering view, this is the most reasonable and the least impactful to, to end up with one house.
While meeting all the setback requirements.
Right, so this balancing or this juggling act that we've, we've sort of, the design challenges of the site. Okay, on the 50-foot buffer, the, the new total is 13,855, and that's down from 15,702, which the board found met the statutory criteria less than two years ago.
Correct.
Okay. So we got a decrease there of 1,847, so some improvement as we're, we're coming back.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so going into the actual arguments of the C1 and the C2, I'll kind of start with the C1. I think it's kind of been hammered home here, this property is unique. There are some exceptional features on the property that make it a hardship to comply with the ordinance as written. In fact, there's no way to dissolve the property without impacting the critical slopes on the southern portion of the property, as we note. The lot width is also, I think, you could argue is a C1 because it is a physical feature of the width of Delaware Ave as it fronts on the two sides of the current property. And then from the C-zone requirements, that's certainly a C1. The property doesn't have enough area within the C-zone as it is. So by subdividing the property and splitting that area, there's no way that the, the new area is ever gonna get more than previously exists within that.
The lot frontage you could resolve by building Delaware Avenue out to make it a public road, then you get the frontage, but we don't think anybody wants that at this moment in time.
Correct. From a C2 argument, I think it's, it's basically you're weighting whether or not the purposes of the MLUL would be advanced by the deviation and whether the benefits, you know, outweigh the negatives and make sure there's no substantial detriment, right? So I think from purposes of zoning, I think purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of the person's neighborhoods and communities, I think that's advanced, kind of similar to what the land use goals in the municipality kind of state. We're reducing the density here than what was previously approved. We're making this kind of a more rural, we'll call it, aesthetic, which kind of fits in with the land use goals. And I think that really promotes goal E. If you go to promote, I promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. I think kind of the exact same thing I just said is, you know, you're, you're situating these houses on this property in a way that screens them from the neighbors, comes off of the weird situation of have Delaware Ave stubs on either side of the property. It kind of uses it to its advantage of creating this separate development from the rest of the area and maintaining the rural character of Long Hill. Purpose J, to promote the conservation of historic sites, districts, open space, energy resources, valuable natural resources in the state, and to prevent urban sprawl. So again, I think we're doing a really good job of designing this project to stay away from all the state-regulated areas on the southern portion of the property. We've designed it in a way that there are some critical slopes being impacted, but no matter what, I believe you couldn't develop the property without impacting those critical slopes. But we're maintaining all of the state-regulated areas and they're not being touched. In addition to that, we're preventing urban sprawl. We're going from what was a four-lot approved subdivision to down to a two-lot. So we're decreasing the amount of sprawl for urban sprawl. So I think generally, this application meets the goals of both the land use ordinance, the MLUL goals. Again, state-regulated flood hazard areas, freshwater wetlands aren't touched. There's a reduction in the density. The comprehensive stormwater management plan has been prepared, reviewed by the board's engineer, reviewed by the Soil Conservation District. They seem to be in agreement that it meets the requirements of the state. And if there wasn't a discussion later on, we would certainly work with the board's professionals on that. And additionally, we're not impacting as much steep slope or as much critical area as was previously approved by the board, so I think there's, there's positives there. The negative criteria, honestly, the negative criteria in my mind is the previous owner had already cleared the property. These, this new application's coming in and trying to generally utilize that disturbance area and then bolster that disturbed area by providing additional landscaping along the buffers to help their neighbors. They're gonna have new neighbors, they're gonna wanna kind of live with these neighbors and decrease this buffer. So it's, the negative criteria, I think, is actually being improved from what the current condition is out there. And it's certainly not to the level of substantial detriment. So in my opinion, I think the applicant has provided, you know, adequate proofs under both the C1 and a C2, and the board should grant the relief and approve the application.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Lohany, thank you for your.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a few comments, and then I have a question, I think that's probably more a legal question. But just a few comments, just to note, and the board, Mr. Osatch was referencing the goals and objectives that are in the zoning ordinance, which are outdated per the 2023 master plan, which is, is something that needs to be addressed. But as we, who were on the board at the time, may remember, the board spent an entire meeting discussing whether rural should be taken out of the township's self-description, and we voted that yes, it should be. So that is something just to keep in mind. I understand why Mr. Osatch looked at that, but those are, those are not up to date. The other issue that I just wanna say that is in the master plan is the C-zone was placed in, in situations like this where you have a split, you know, a lot was in two zones. And essentially, the portions that were state-regulated, as Mr. Osatch said, there's wetlands, et cetera, that are regulated by the state, they were put in the C-zone. The master plan recommended that those essentially be, that, that's sort of, in those instances, the C-zone should be removed. So, you know, there are two variances relating to the C-zone, not meeting the C-zone requirement, so you could keep that in mind, that, consistent with the master plan, that would be taken away anyway because the state regulates, regulates it anyway. Another issue, I would say, and Mr. Skolnick sort of beat me to it, with, with arguing a C1 hardship versus a C2 flexible C with the lot frontage. I, I actually would say it is, it's a C2 and it's specifically not a C1 because you're essentially creating it, you know, that hardship. Which I, so I think it can be argued under the C2, and I think Mr. Osatch did, but I think you would not want to argue it under the C1. So then, the final question I have, and I, it's, when you look at the survey, it says there's a 50-foot wide roadway easement, right? And so that exists, right?
There, it depends on where you look. It's referred to as both a utility easement in some locations and some locations it's referred to as a roadway easement.
So do you know if, are they the same easement or are they separate?
They, as far as I can see from the depiction of both of them, they coincide or they're over top of each other. So it, it could just be a semantics, labeling issue in different areas.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause I noticed that when you, on the survey, it shows a 50-foot wide roadway easement, but you don't have it on your subdivision plan. And I would imagine the board, you'd want it in both places, just so it's a little bit clear.
That's fine.
And before I go into my legal question, I, I will also note that the board very deliberately took out any references to Delaware Avenue in the 2023 master plan because the application was before this board at the same time. And so we left it with a little bit more flexibility to the board. And, you know, essentially, it wound up being a recommendation in the circulation element, evaluate potential street connections which would improve movement of emergency vehicles and/or residents during extreme weather events. So that was, there was a specific reason that the, I think the board felt that they wanted to have more flexibility in evaluating applications. So finally, this is my legal question, which is, if there is this 50-foot.
Should I tell you my hourly rate before you ask me the legal question? It could be X right now.
All right, well.
You can estimate, mine's a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say.
Well, I, I just, I'm curious if you've read the easement language for the 50-foot wide roadway easement?
I have not recently, I think in another lifetime when I represented some neighbors, five years ago, I may have.
So my question is, do you know if you're allowed to put a road, like a driveway across it? Because I understand, I understand that you're not building on it, building a structure on it, but are you allowed to improve it with?
So I think we, we've had this conversation, I don't know if there was a legal discussion, but the understanding is if the town decided to ever come through and construct the road through, the driveways would have to reconnect in on the public roadway. So the driveways that exist or are shown and would be connected would have to be re-engineered or redesigned to connect into the roadway coming through.
Yeah, it's just a question, I'm curious about the wording and the easement.
I doubt, it, it may be on a filed map somewhere, there's right-of-way, I've dealt with similar situations. It's gonna just say, "right-of-way" on a filed map. I highly, highly doubt there are specific prohibitions on what you can do and what you can't do, but my client owns the property, it's putting in a driveway, and if the town ever comes along, seems to be quite like, quite unlikely that it ever will, but there's nothing that we're doing here that's gonna prevent the town. So that, I think, we could, the town could say, "you don't have the right." I don't think that they would have an argument there, but we'd have to take a look at it. I highly doubt there's something that says, "you can't put, you can't pave in that area, you know, as an interim measure."
Well, how about this, so just, and I'm really just asking curiosity, that you do have a sanitary sewer and a water easement there. I have, and other towns have been told, you can't even plant on those. Do you know that if you can put a driveway on them?
So that, that we specifically spoke with New Jersey American on. They are comfortable with what we're showing. The intent is to leave outside of the driveway areas just lawn, maintained lawn, but not any significant shrubs or anything. And they're comfortable that they, if there was a break or they had to maintain or do anything with, you know, the water sewer line, that they would have the access and the ability through those easements to get to the lines.
The option here is a taking, under your hypothesis. The town would tell us, I don't think they would, you can't.
No, I really, I'm actually just curious, what are, what are the terms of the easement? I just wanna make sure before we approve something, and then, and then it's like, oh, guess what? You can't put a driveway there. So I think it's, and, and I'm not even just talking about the town, Rich, I'm also talking about the, the utilities.
Yeah, the utilities are okay with it, I hear ya. I, I think that would be unlikely that there's anything, but I haven't looked to see if there, if in fact there is any additional language other than a filed map somewhere.
Did you run away? Yeah, I got a couple, I mean, just trying to flush it out here. So is the, let's call it the, the road easement, is it an easement or is it dedicated right-of-way at this point?
That's our, that's our property, right?
Yeah, as far as, everything we've seen is described as an easement.
It's an easement.
It's an easement.
Okay. Another question, have you talked to the township or anybody? I mean, I'm sure you've talked to Joe.
So we've talked to the township, well, I shouldn't say we. I believe the applicant has talked to the township about that area.
Okay.
And at this time, they didn't wanna entertain vacating that easement or getting rid of that easement.
They want to retain the right to it at some point in the future.
Right.
Understandable.
Not only for this application, but as this board's aware, there's been a history of applications on this property. So I think they're a little hesitant to give up any rights that they have because they've seen what's happened in the past and nothing's actually come of the applications. I believe this applicant really does wanna do what they're saying they're, they're proposing here. They wanna build two single-family houses. I think at that time, the town would probably be more likely to entertain that idea of vacating that easement or coming to some agreement with them.
Right. Okay. I mean, if it's an easement, it's not a dedicated right-of-way. I, I mean, it really depends what the easement itself says, if it says anything, as to what your rights are. But I mean, you kind of run at your own risk if you get an approval here tonight and the town wants to, you know, says you can't build it. I would hope they haven't at this point because you've got another conversations, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, that, you're kind of running, you're running the risk there. I guess, to maybe put the board at ease, would you guys be willing to, you know, at least stipulate for any approval here that you would remove or reconfigure the driveways if, if the township wants to build that road at some point?
I, I mean, that's the, that's the agreement that's in place with the town, is my understanding anyway. So if the roadway ever come through, that's kind of how we design the houses, to be away from that easement area. So it was taken into account.
Right, right, and I guess even if they did create a right-of-way or they wanted the full dedication, they build the road, at that point, it would probably become a pre-existing, non-conforming condition.
Yes, then there would be some relief that would, right.
Right, okay.
Ms. Lohany, did you have anything further?
No.
No.
It is a bizarre situation.
I definitely want to get to the public, and I do value tremendously public input, but I do want to just check in with the board here in regards to, I guess, point of clarification questions, as to what you've heard, or certainly questions for our board professionals. Please.
I guess I'll start with the fairly obvious points, obviously about easement, about anywhere. You know, history.
I do know the history, and I know you and I had a lot of conversations with the last-
Yeah. So you know where my sentiment is. This is sort of between the two.
Right.
So I'm not sure if it's good or bad, to be honest.
Yep.
Right? I like the idea that you're limiting access, which was one of the concerns from-
Correct.
Previous.
Yep.
I am concerned of the structure of it, and what, and I'm surprised the emergency folks are happy with this almost, you know, very tight angle here on the north side property. So with the, any, was there any consideration of keeping Delaware Ave as a functioning right-of-way, if you will, but putting that cul-de-sac concept at the end? And then who would be responsible for maintaining the, if it were to be a true road?
We looked at a, I'll call it a quasi-cul-de-sac situation, where it would be more a paper cul-de-sac, not an actual physical cul-de-sac. That would have been just to artificially get frontage up to the 150-foot minimum on either property. So from a physical standpoint, no, the cul-de-sac was never really contemplated. From a layout or subdivision perspective, it was looked at, but we, they kind of had some conversations and agreed that this layout makes more sense, specifically because we're not trying to illustrate that this is a road. We don't believe it needs to be connected anymore. The applicant doesn't believe it needs to be connected anymore. And so by virtually cutting the property in half and putting the line through the property, it illustrates that this is no longer Delaware Avenue road going through. And it provides a stub off of the end of Delaware on both sides for access to the property.
And if the easement remains with the town, would it still be technically Delaware Avenue? Because I know we had the concern about, with Google Maps, drivers going down, thinking it's a connection. Would they still see that as a connection?
That I don't really answer to. I would imagine these properties would have Delaware Ave addresses. I don't know what else address they would have. But again, I think it's, from a physical perspective, if this gets built, it's going to look like two residential driveways on either side. It's not going to look like a roadway. It's not going to invite people through.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. I have a couple of questions based off of a couple of your comments. You said you've spoken with the fire department and the EMS, or the applicant has spoken to the fire department or the EMS, and you said they've had no issues. What exactly did they say?
Did you meet, or was that-
The applicant had that conversation.
We call him up?
Yeah.
Rob, you want to come up and tell us who you met with, and we'll get you sworn in?
Yep.
All right, sir. Could you raise your hand for me? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Great. Name and address, please.
My name is Robert Lor.
And your current address?
1540 Long Hill Road, Milliken.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, you're the property owner now?
That's correct.
And it's you and your wife are the applicants here?
Yep.
And somewhere along the line, I said, you might want to talk to-
Yeah, correct.
Fire department, and you took that advice?
So we talked to the fire inspector in town, the fire, the person that provides all the emergency qualifications for the buildings in town.
Do you remember who that was? Do you remember the name?
I can look back at my notes in a few minutes and provide that. But we talked about how he would be the one that's reviewing the emergency access of this property, officially, and authorizing it. So I'll get you his name. I'm not sure. It was a month back or so. But he specified that as long as they have the ability to get a fire truck into the property and have the frontage in front of the house in order to pull up the emergency vehicles, in order to deal with any emergency that takes place, as long as there's no structures in the way, that there would be no concern of them getting access from either side to make sure that the houses are taken care of in case of emergency.
Did he opine on the connection through? Ignore your houses for a second. Did they give an opinion about driving through this layout?
My understanding is that there is currently no right-of-way that's proposed, and so there was no discussion regarding that taking place.
But that was a sensitive, you understand, that's a sensitive issue in the previous application?
Yeah, understood.
Right?
Yes.
So I'd like to hear a bit more explicitly about the potential for fire trucks to come through. No issue with your houses, as such?
Right.
They need to get from one side to the other. I'd be curious to see what they have to say about it.
We've been pending, we've been pending for 70 days now. We don't have a review letter.
Mr. Jones still has the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was a conversation, there's nothing in writing. Is that correct? Okay, so you don't have anything in writing from the fire inspector that works in this building that came out, and you, or didn't come out to your site, but probably had a conversation with you?
Correct.
Here.
Yeah. He said he walked the property at one point, and took a look when the application was first admitted, but he didn't provide anything in writing to that effect.
Okay. Because, because the statement alluded to the fact that there might have been something in writing, or my recommendation was, if you're getting anything, you should get it in writing, because it's going to come back and bite you if you don't.
Sure, absolutely.
I noticed it's a 20-foot driveway width, as it makes that hard left-hand turn to go up to the property. And then after that, it looks like the driveway then makes a greater-than-90-degree turn to cross in front of, and it looks like it's maybe 10 feet wide to 12 feet wide?
You're talking-
The cut across in front of the property.
Cut across.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, again, if the intent is not for the fire truck to utilize all that drive, or utilize the driveways if there was urgency, they need to get into the property, and as long as there's nothing within the easement area, they are comfortable, as I understand it, to at least drive into the property and fight the fuck.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could I just interject?
Please.
Because you're along EMS and fire. Where is the closest hydrant?
I think it's on the, on the east side. I feel like it's on the east side.
And there's, and there's no-
Top of Delaware.
Yeah, no, please.
Yes, where do you come up, off of Delaware, where you enter into their property?
In the multifamily zone. In the multifamily? So that's on the west side, top side of your map.
Ma'am, could you, could you please just come up?
Could you just come up and-
I'm going to swear you in.
Because that would help if you swore in, and then could give, provide that information. Thank you.
Any objection, counselor, to, okay, just making sure.
I'm Carol Persson.
All right. Miss, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Name and address one more time for us.
66 Crab Apple Lane.
And what was your name? I'm sorry.
Carol Persson.
Persson.
Thank you for clarifying.
Literally, literally, as you come up Delaware, you're going into their property from the east side. It's right there.
From the east, or from the west side?
From the west side, from the west side.
Both the family or the other?
I think it's on the west side.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. My next question is regarding your conversation with NJAW. Now, this is a paper street, so there is an easement there. What that'll look like in the future, I don't know. But they said, in your, in your testimony, is that they had, that they were comfortable with, they have no issues.
So that we have in writing, they gave us a sketch of how they want the water main to connect through. We have in writing that they will serve the property for both water and sewer. And they gave us the general, call it the general layout of the water line. Ultimately, they designed themselves and installed the water main. The applicant has to provide fees for them to do that. But they reviewed the property, and they gave us a sketch of what they want.
Okay, so you have that in written for your own personal-
I don't think we submitted those. I don't think we submitted the will-serve letters. Those may, they may not be-
They may not have been submitted.
We could provide those, no problem.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. And I guess you're going to give them access, if they have to go onto the property, to deal with any type of issue.
Yeah, that's part of the easement.
It's part of the agreement, right?
Proposed.
Okay. My last question is regarding the stormwater. I think you covered off the flow. Let me see where my note is. Oh, should you not uphold your end of the deal to maintain the storm management? What is expected of the town?
Just give me, or you ask me?
Whoever wants to answer it.
I think the town reserves a right to step in and do it, and then fine you, and, you know, collect.
That's most likely what's probably going to happen, if it doesn't get upkept.
I mean, but they, you know, they could give you a ticket and a summons, there'll be-
Yeah, a warning, do the right thing. I mean, we're not, this town is not that authoritative.
I think that that, that frontier, so to speak, has not played out, because it's really in the last couple of years that the DPD-
Yeah, there's been some improvements on that.
You really got to-
Yep.
Make sure, there were, back when I started my career, there was also, who's going to maintain? The owners or the town? That was, now it's very clearly the ownership has to maintain.
Yep.
Then there was, maybe these professionals-
We just don't need undue burden.
The last couple of years, you got to start recording the documents. There.
Yeah. And they're going to have three catch basins on that property, if I, if I looked at that right. One to the east, one to the north, and one to the south.
I believe there's, as designed currently, there's three surface basins. There's additional subsurface basins being proposed as well.
Fair point. Okay, fair point. So we don't need any undue burden on our DPW. That's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, if there's a complaint, they're going to say, "Go clean your basins, go change the filter," and, you know, if you don't do it, they send another, that are-
Just on that point, I'd point out, ultimately, I think typically the township attorney would review the deeds with, you know, related to the stormwater engine stuff, for lack of a better term. That's why they review it, because they will ensure that there's proper mechanisms in there for the township to enforce, if need be.
And thanks for pointing that out. I do like the four-eyes principle with the two attorneys and the two engineers looking at that. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Other questions?
Long, just quick, just give me a sense of the scale of the houses, would you?
The scale of the houses?
Yeah. How big are they? How's the square footage?
I believe this house, about 10,000 square feet.
10,000?
And then this is 3,500.
3,500?
Correct.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, those would be subject to lot grading plans, and all the details, the architecture would be reviewed under those future points.
Right, but expectation is 10 and 3,500.
Correct. And stormwater management, design, anticipating those size developments.
Okay.
So I will ask one question, because I know that the cul-de-sac discussion was sort of held. And I appreciate what you're trying to do on, on the two properties for the neighborhoods. Okay, I was not involved in planning board at the time of the last approval. I'm just thinking about this from the perspective of somebody coming up Delaware Avenue from the west, towards this area, and how are they not going to want to just, oh, the road's changed, make this left-hand turn right into the driveway? Is it going to, how obvious is that going to be, that that's a driveway?
Again, so you're going from a 30-foot-wide roadway, and you're choking it down significantly. On one side, it's proposed at 12 feet, the other side, it's 20. So there's a big jump down that looks like a residential drive. In addition, they're probably going to install pillars on either side of the driveway, which open up like an estate-type of entrance to the residential property. It's going to aesthetically look like a driveway. It's not going to look like a roadway.
You could put a sign, private driveway, no entrance, and-
On the pillars.
You know, something like that.
Right. So, but consider the, some young person joyriding down the street, looks like he can go through, as he comes up to it, turns, realizes it's driveway, he's going to have to try to back out, but he has no clear, easy egress to turn around until he gets all the way back on Delaware. Right? So that, to, that's, that's why, conceptually in my head, the cul-de-sac created the turnaround for somebody who went, uh-oh, in the wrong direction, you know, went too far. Then you see the driveway, and you see a cul-de-sac, and now I can make a turn and access it without going up the driveway.
Correct.
Are you trying to refer to a cul-de-sac on their property?
Well, I don't know. But, I mean, as, as it was discussed, this is an easement. It's not constructed by the town. So if you made a cul-de-sac down at the bottom, then that person would be able to turn around more safely, without accessing the driveway at all.
Yeah, and I think-
And I'm trying to understand, did you consider that? And if you did, why you dismissed it?
Yeah. I think, to think about it, that condition currently exists.
Under-
There's a stone drive that, that currently runs through the property. And if somebody gets there and doesn't go through the property, they're backing out now. If what you're saying becomes a problem, I would say it's kind of the township's responsibility to install that, that cul-de-sac or road as part of their road improvement, if they ever install the road through the property. What's being proposed here is just utilizing the stubs of Delaware Ave on either side, as they currently operate and service these two single-family houses.
Could put a gate there, you know, I don't, if it became a problem. Put the gate in, just like today.
I think what Bob's probably trying to get at is the convenience, so right now, if somebody goes down there thinking, go for it, right? They're going to reverse into the road, they may go into the other properties on either side before you get to this property. So I think Bob, you're thinking it's a cul-de-sac at the end, and off the cul-de-sac is the private, the blocks, and the, you know, going, the entrance into the property. I think that's what, just wants to make sure it's a turning area perhaps, is that what you're suggesting?
Right.
At the entrance of the property.
And which, yeah, I mean, which side of the property are you-
Well, both at this point.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's what we're proposing.
Right, that's what you're proposing.
Yeah, okay, and let's not get into-
And we're not, yeah.
And you said Delaware was 30 feet wide on both sides?
Yes.
Right, so that should-
Yeah, a normal, typical roadway width is 24 feet wide, so there's extra room there to do the backup that you're talking about, and the maneuvering.
Okay.
So the intent is to make it like it's a, it's a, you know, a very private drive, not inviting in any way, shape, or form.
Correct.
That could be ultimately a gate, it could be some stone pillars, it could be a sign that says, "Private driveway, do not enter." I think we're thinking, not that it can't happen, I'm never going to say never, but it's pretty unlikely. And if it does become a problem, you could take, you know, some increasing steps to shut that down by pillars, signage, ultimately a gate that the fire department can just drive through if there was a fire. So, Rob, is that what you're sort of thinking?
Yeah, that's exactly.
There are that.
We've talked with our architects to try and figure out the best way to mitigate it as much as possible, because obviously, we also don't want people driving down.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So the goal is to mitigate that as much as possible, but still make it aesthetically pleasing for anybody that comes to the den, and it's not, you know, overwhelming lights and sirens or whatever, you know. So we're trying to make it helpful for everybody.
All right. I'd like to open this up to the public, but before I do so, if you could just make a couple of introductory comments.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is the public portion we're going to move into, folks. I guess we'll do, you want to just do questions and comments at the same time?
Yeah, I mean, I also wanted to just check in with the board, are they good? Should we push through? Are you ready, or you need a break?
No.
About 150 degrees up here.
It's not just man. It's not just man.
He's covering his hands, he's a fan.
When we, when we order batteries, could you order air-
So, anyway, so the way this is going to work, one at a time, we're going to come up to the dais. I'll swear you in, just in case you do want to make any statements. Before I do, though, is anybody here represented by a lawyer or an attorney? No attorneys? Okay, the only reason I ask, if you're represented by counsel, questions- the only reason I ask, if you're represented by counsel, questions have to come through your attorney. You can still make comments, but that's irrelevant, 'cause nobody has a lawyer here. Okay, who's first?
Yes, and, and please, if you do come up, obviously limit your questioning to the application and to the testimony that you've heard this evening.
Questions and comments.
Chris, are you just gonna swear everybody in on that?
Yeah, it's better safe than sorry. I don't want to do in the middle.
It's hot over here, too.
Sir, hold on one second. I swear again. Sir, could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, that's all we got?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Ronald Scholl, 78 Crab Apple.
All right, wait, hold on. We're gonna need the microphone.
Yeah.
We'll get that here.
We're just.
Do you wanna untape it?
Loud as I can.
Was it Velcroed on there or something?
I think, I think you took the power source out.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's got a little 8050 connector.
So we gotta get the work going on a, or.
All right, now we're good.
Catch it must by new. And now we know why it was taped down. Be very gentle.
All right.
I have a couple of questions for you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your, sorry, I didn't hear your name and address. Could you just say it again?
Yeah.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Ronald Scholl, 78 Crab Apple.
Thank you.
These catch bases that you have on your plan, you can't see them from where we are, but they're there. Who is in charge of maintaining them from the day that you're done with construction?
So that was kind of brought up by the word and through the questioning. There's gonna be a maintenance manual associated with the stormwater design that gets filed with the deed. There's gonna be some legal entity that the owners, owners of the two properties will have to maintain the properties and, uh, the stormwater management.
And maybe just the owners and not a separate legal entity.
Correct. Because for this, here, all right, the water comes down this way now. This is all wet stuff.
Yep.
Down here, it all floods. I think these people that live in this house always have water running through the property. My big concern is, I don't live there, but I have a big concern, is that the water that is here is gonna start flowing into this property, the back of the property where you would water, okay, and not continue to flood Morris Town Road and flood it back to these houses. Because ultimately what happens, you do all these studies, correct? And this is what's supposed to happen. Five years down the line, we go down the line, and then all these townhouses, condos have water. Yeah, I don't know. What, what I can say is, we've designed the system and.
It's just too close.
I am not an engineer.
Try now.
Well, this might just work from here, so I'm gonna.
Sound is terrific.
Should we push it back?
Hold on.
So, to answer your question, the, the stormwater management system, the state has very extensive rules on how these things are designed and different criteria that they have to meet to meet the regulations. Specifically, there's quantity requirements, there's quality requirements, and there's recharge requirements. And the proposed design effectively meets all criteria. And from a quantity perspective, the way it's measured is, you take a model of what the existing condition flows are, and you have to have a reduction in your proposed condition of those peak flows. So essentially, the amount of water, or the flow rate of the water coming off of the property at the analyzation point is less than it is today, is how you model the stormwater and the stormwater management. So I hope that answers your, your question.
Yep. Now, for the utility right-of-way, I know you spoke earlier about.
Please get a little bit closer to the mic.
For the utility right-of-way, you spoke about possible that there may be an EMS or fire truck running, have to run through there. If it's grass and dirt, that doesn't work. Has there been a development to put those concrete pieces in the ground before you put the grass over it, so these trucks can actually get in to do their job like we do in most sites? Because that truck's gonna be heavier than any lawn you're gonna put down there.
It's not something we were specifically proposing, but we will continue to talk with the fire and emergency services. If it's something that they ultimately require, I don't think the applicant would necessarily be opposed to that. As long as it still has the aesthetic of grass coming through, I, I think that we could do that.
Okay. I think that's all I had right now.
All right, who's next?
You want me, so you want me to go over there, too?
No, no.
Stay there. I like.
The Lord wants us to sit over here.
Everything's moving. Everything's working. Don't move. Stay, stay here.
Sworn in, so.
Just be careful. All right, sir. Let me swear you in. Right hand. We play it by the book here. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So I do. Name and address, please, sir.
Scott Mortensen, 23 Fernwood Terrace, Gillette. We already have a water problem. This is gonna exacerbate that water problem. 1,300 feet of critical slope is a big deal in that spot. And what I don't see is an alternative to shift that second house, the one that's on the east side, shift it further to the west, so that there is nothing that has to be touched in that critical area. Why would we elect and make a decision to interrupt that critical area when there is an alternative? And that alternative may not be the best alternative, but it is an alternative that will minimize future issues with the properties on the east, as well as what's gonna become your water management program for the future. So my question is, why not provide an alternative to that, which shifts that house over and does not in any way take up any of that critical slope area?
Sir, for, just for clarification, when you say "that house," you referring to the house on the right side of the page or the left side of the page?
Right.
Okay.
South side.
That's to the south?
Yes, yes.
The way the page is oriented, the left side of the sheet is the north, the right side is the south.
So the testimony I provided is, on the southern portion of the property, there's no area on the property that you could build a house that meets the requirements of the minimum floor area requirements within the township, and not design it so that it does not impact critical slopes. Where we're proposing the house, or where we're showing the location, is the one area that's within, that's actually the least amount of critical slope along the, I'll call it the northern portion of the southern section, as close as you can get to the easement area, without touching the actual critical slopes. If I moved it further to, I'll call it the.
North. He's asking further if you.
The west.
No, he's asking it further to the west. If you move it further to the west, it's gonna be in a critical slope, the structure.
So you looked at these issues?
We did look at these.
Looked at these issues, whatever you could to try to minimize the slopes. This was what, from an engineering standpoint, you thought the best spot?
Correct.
Okay, that.
Yeah, I can.
Which directions are we talking about here, Mike?
So if you start moving this further to the south, you start impacting critical slopes here. It's outside of the critical slope here. It's within the buffers. So as you keep moving it, you further impact other buffers and potentially critical slopes.
Exactly, but those, those critical slopes don't affect neighbors to that side.
They affect neighbors to this side.
Not to the degree, because the way that slope goes, it's, it's stronger, and, you know, I have a better term for it, but it's more on the southeast side than it is on the southwest side. I've walked that property enough to know.
Yeah, and again, I'll just basically say, this relatively mimics the area of the previous development that was approved, and the house was proposed in this location, and then there was an additional house proposed in this location.
Correct, correct.
And so the disturbance was, has already occurred. It's already been cleared upon these properties. They're just trying to right the wrong and, you know, locate the house in the spot that was already cleared, and then grade it in a way to minimize these effects.
If that's, if that's what the board wants, then, you know, you guys have to consider that. But it doesn't make sense why we would disturb a critical path next to a development when you have far less resistance on the other side. Another question I have or comment is, you talked about the New Jersey regulations, the water regulations. Which regulations are you using? The previous application was approved with not the latest water management regulations from the state?
So you, just to make it, make it clear that I understand what you're asking, the stormwater management regulations? Yes. So we've designed this property with the most up-to-date standards of the stormwater management. And that's why if you look at the previous four-lot subdivision, there was actually less devices proposed. Based on the new stormwater management rules, you need to have more isolated pockets of BMPs, as they call them, Best Management Practices, or devices, spread out throughout the property that manage less area going to each of them. So we've designed this with the most current rules and regulations.
All right. And then the letter we got, which it goes to process, this is the second time we've been involved, and we've come before this board. It's the second time we got the letter right before the meeting. Whatever the 10 days is, whatever the 15 days is, maybe that's the game that's played, but it doesn't give you any time to go through any of those documents that you mentioned at the bottom of the letter, that we should be able to review for preparation for this meeting. So will that regulation that you mentioned, will that be stated in those documents when we go to pull, pull those to see those tomorrow?
I'm not sure I understand the question here.
The question is, are, do you cite, or do you have a letter from the state?
At a time.
Finish the question.
Right. Do you have, do you have cited in those documents the, the state reg that you're using for wastewater, for water management?
Yeah, so the, the state stormwater management rules are cited within the stormwater management report.
Okay, perfect. Good. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Vreeland, is that, to your understanding, through Mr. Vuch's review as well?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
It's consistent with the most recent.
With the testimony that, that you're hearing from the average engineer.
In the last application that was approved, you know, and I sat through my very first meeting with all of you, that road was a big deal. It's funny how it's not a big deal now, but those EMT trucks certainly needed to get through there. The police guys said it was faster for us to go through there than to go around, and same with the fire guys. So it's just kind of curious that it's not as important today as it was 18 months ago. Now, having said that, that's been a walkway for the communities on both sides. Is that pathway gonna still remain for people to walk through from Del, one side of Delaware to the other side of Delaware? Or is that gonna be shut off by those pillars that you talked about, and the view of a 10,000-foot home?
I think that's a question for the applicant, but I can, my understanding is, it's their private property. I don't think they intend to allow the public to just walk through their property.
Okay, that's a question now for the board. Because is that Long Hill Township property?
No.
Is that easement? Is that a road? What, what is that?
I think from what we've heard as far as testimony goes, it's an easement held by the township. It's not a, it's an easement at this point. It's not a public right-of-way.
Okay.
So I, as to what that is, I don't think we're aware of the ins and outs of it, but I, I can't say whether or not it's, the public is even allowed to.
But it will, it will remain an easement for.
Yes, but that doesn't necessarily mean that any member of the public can just walk across it. Does that make sense?
It, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Yeah. A little bit on landscaping. It would probably be good, and we appreciate any efforts on the landscaping that you're, you're affording. We would certainly like to have some input toward that, especially if there's going to be 1,300 square feet of critical slope taken away. There, our input would be toward water management, certainly. And I think that's about it. So, thank you.
You have to stay right there. You have to hold it right there for the remainder of the hearing.
I actually think it's the wires, the blue wire, the.
I think they're interacting.
I think they're, they're playing with each other.
Oh.
The power cord, all of that, because there's power going through that video cord.
We're gonna try to keep it as far apart as.
You gotta put your professional hat on.
Do you wanna put?
It's like plugging an aux cord in your cord. It doesn't work. Mic check, okay. Sir, whatever you do.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Glenn Holmes.
He's gonna swear again.
A large man, slow, give me a second. All right, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, that's all we got?
I do.
Name and address one more time for us, please.
My name is Glenn Holmes, son of Joan B. Holmes Living Trust, 137 Woods End, Gillette, New Jersey, part of the Chestnut Run Townhouse Complex, sort of the lowest-end neighbor to this property, so we have concern. My first question is, you were the same gentleman as last time when we had the four houses?
That's correct.
Was that its highest and best use when you were proposing that to the board?
I'll object to the question. You could try to answer, but.
I think you asked the exact same question at the, the last hearing, and we didn't really have a response.
It's not, it's not really that relevant, so.
And you're proposing two houses now. Is that the highest and best use for this property?
Can you answer? No.
Okay. Generally, in general appraising a property, yourself as a critical engineer would view it and say, what's the highest and best use for this property? Should we put in a, more townhouses or something to that effect? But you haven't done that?
This, this avoids that possibility forever.
I appreciate what you're proposing. Understand, I do, I am happy with your proposal.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that.
I recognize there are, you're working within the storage and the water works that is provided by the town and the, and that's very good.
We appreciate that. The concept of highest and best use is not generally one that is part of these discussions. I realize it's a real estate proposition, but we're not arguing that this is the highest and best use. I, you know, it's only two lots. We, we believe that's a benefit to the.
It's one lot.
Well, the proposal is for two, and we believe that.
Yeah.
That's an excellent development.
Well, in the past, they were proposing four, and they represented it and sold it to the board, and everyone except that gentleman on, with the dark gray shirt, approved it, saying, yes, this is a great idea. Meanwhile, we had all the property owners saying, this is a bad idea. They were non-contiguous houses. So you're on the right track. You have, you're building quality homes where they belong, and it's contiguous with the neighborhood.
We appreciate that.
And I like that. My concern is the, generally the displacement. We're doing asphalt road through there, and will that have a stone curb road, or stone curbs along it, as they do at the lower part of Delaware?
So I, if I understood your question, I think you were alluding to the fact that there would be a road going through the property. That's not the intent. It's, it's.
There's two driveways, one from. There's two driveways, one from the west side and one from the east side?
Yeah, so there would be two residential driveways, and they would be designed in accordance with the the standards of the local ordinance.
There's a no outlet sign down at the bottom of Maristown Road in Delaware to tell delivery drivers and everyone you can't get out, a no outlet. That's, so that will remain in place?
I don't believe there's any intent as part of this application to touch any signage off of the property.
That would be up to the township to decide.
Would that be a township question?
Right.
You think that would stay in place, that no outlet?
This isn't the township, this is the planning board.
Oh, oh.
You have to come to the township.
We're all on the same, we're all on the same team, technically.
They get air conditioning, the township. Sorry, we didn't pay our rent.
We've got to run for office for that.
We can't even get microphones.
Again, my ultimate concern is displacement. Myself being at the, what's called the southern eastern end, is the most likely person to gather moss, gather the water that comes from this. I just hope the Board can look at this objectively and make sure the capacities of the land are within the state approval and not to give variances for any additional water going into that area. As I had said earlier, it's affecting Maristown Road, it's affecting the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We have the railroad tracks down there, it cannot take anymore, that's called a reclamation area. That's where the water has to sit for months to evaporate back in part of the world we live in. So please work within your limits, and that's within, just keep an eye on everything, thank you.
I understand, thank you, sir.
Any additional questions, comments from the public?
Now's your opportunity, you're not going to get another one. Okay, I think we're good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So I think at this time, what I would appreciate is just a summation, potentially, is to.
Sure, Chairman, I appreciate hearing from the Board, we're not a planning board, but we want to take comments and address concerns.
And we'll, I'll come back to the Board, but I did want just a quick summation in regards to also what you've heard from the public or anything else that you wanted to add.
We, we heard police and fire, that you're concerned about that. Now, some Boards are going to defer that and say, we're prepared to approve so long as police and fire say that there's no issue. That is often the case, but not always the case. We're at a little disadvantage because we submitted a while ago, and we don't have anything in writing from fire. I don't know if they submitted anything, but we had a meeting in good faith, we believe that they were satisfied. We heard a request for the will-serv letters to get the details, representing that we have them. I didn't, I don't know that we had them when I submitted, I don't believe they're part of the package. I would call that a technical issue, the formal will-serv letters on water and sewer. We've met with them, we believe they're going to be coming, and we're comfortable on both water and sewer. We heard Ms. Mahaney raise the issue of.
You've got to get a little bit closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
We heard the issue of the, you know, the right-of-way document. I'm going to go do the research, it's a title issue. I don't think we're going to have a problem with the town, but it's not really a planning board issue. If the town says you can't do this, I think it creates a host of complexities in that we wouldn't be able to do anything at all if we can't put a single-family curb cut off of a stub of a public street. But I got to have the Board comfortable, I think you appreciate it, the stakes are very high. My client bought this property, they closed on the property, we want to address all the planning issues. We believe we've satisfied the proofs, we believe we have excellent review letters stating that we comply on stormwater. We've addressed the concerns, we think the variances are reasonable and limited in scope. Certainly, certainly, compared to what was approved before, we think we we have a nice improvement here. This Board made findings of fact not that long ago on more severe intrusions into the steep slopes and the steep slope buffer, and we've made some very nice reductions. The most important one in the intrusion into the steep slope itself, let me just repeat those numbers, because you don't, you don't get that that often. We're about 25% of of what was happening before. We go from the disturbance in the critical area from 4,838 on an old project that could still be built to 1,294. That's clearly a benefit to the public on the disturbance in the critical areas. We're chopping that 75% off, more modest, but still reductions in the disturbance in the 25-foot buffer. That's the, the more sensitive of the two, we got a decrease of 4,600 square feet. So that's, that's a solid number, disturbance 50 feet buffer, a decrease of 1,847. More modest, but still material. And then the question is, and I think the testimony was convincing, I'll submit that it was, this is the best spot. You're going to have one house on each side of Delaware, Delaware is, is the town's, has its rights there, and if it wants to build a cul-de-sac or take another look at this or see how things play out, we understand that, that's a risk, that they're going to build the houses, and Delaware could change with the town. But there's, there's got to be some reasonable development of the property. And if you chop off the C-zone, we still have seven acres of one-acre zoning. And we have to deal with the constraints, but the governing body has said one-acre zoning in this area is reasonable, and that's sort of our, our guidepost to reasonable density. And we're way, way under that, so I would submit that this is a very positive development. You have a unicorn of a property owner here, I would submit overall, that's taken great care, made great improvements, and has created an economic proposition, not to do eight, not to do six, not to even do four, but build an estate-type home at, at the end of the street and have essentially the least impact. Grandma and grandpa are going to have come in, in and out once a day in terms of trip traffic. And one other family, you know, the, two trips a day, three trips a day, very low on the traffic generation. A lot of area kept open, so I don't want to repeat the testimony. I certainly think there is sufficient evidence in the record, I think the proposal is reasonable, modest, an improvement. If it's built, it's a final disposition. One of the Board members said, right, it's not going to be townhouses, a final disposition. I think this is really, at the end, the best from a, a planning standpoint, and we're prepared to listen. I don't want to walk away from here and say, you didn't address that, because you appreciate, I think, the stakes are very high. And if you need more information, I'm going to say, you know, let's come back. I don't want to have to do that, but if you say you need police and fire, or will-serv letter from NJAW, or right-of-way, or anything else, we're going to, we're going to stop and come back and give you the full information.
Thank you, no, I think we, we, we understand that approach, so I think with that said, Mr. Attorney, could you help?
Can I just add, add one thing?
Yes, please, yeah.
So there, there just was testimony about paper streets, and I just want to, there's a fine line, because paper streets in this town are streets that are, are paper, but they actually aren't owned by the property owner, even if they've encroached in it. And so I just want to just clarify, or have you verify, this isn't a paper street. It's an easement, because there was testimony that it was.
It's an easement, everything, everything that we have read notes it as an easement, not a dedicated right-of-way.
So it's not a paper street, yeah?
It's kind of like a, I don't know, like masquerading as a paper street in a way, right, but it's not.
Yeah.
So the town has a legal right, an easement is a contract, the town has a right to do certain things, and there's nothing that we're proposing, we believe, is going to interfere with anything the town may want to do tomorrow or at the end of the day. My understanding, I wasn't here in the last go-around, the community sentiment is, we don't want to go through, and police and some members who are not here tonight thought it was important that it go through. I don't think it's up to the Board to resolve that issue respectfully. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, for somebody else. And I, oh, just one last comment, Chairman, just to finish it off. I, I think the concerns of Bob, if I may hit the X, I want to try your last name, can be reasonably accommodated here. We're, we're cognizant that some enterprising teenager might try to go down. Our view is it's going to be very rare for the reasons that Kelly explained, it's really going to narrow down. And there are a series of very modest incremental steps that can be taken on both ends. If Rob feels he has too many errant people coming down, errants, coming down the driveway, he could put some signage up, he could do some pillars. If it was really bad, he could do some sort of gated situation, you could have to meet your ordinances, maybe have to come back. But there's sort of a series of things, I think practically speaking, it's pretty unlikely because of the physical nature, it's, the street's going to get smaller, it's going to turn, so we get the concern. They don't think they need the cul-de-sac, they don't want to facilitate people going further and turning around. Town decides it needs something else, town has some rights over there to do it. But Rob thinks that he can sort of control that situation, doesn't see the odds being too great it's going to be a problem, but if it is, there's some ways to sort of handle that, reasonably speaking, and not, I don't think it's going to be some massive public policy sort of issue.
Thank you, I think we've, we've got it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, my turn, all right. Okay, so I'll try, do my best to try to sum up everything being requested and the conditions. So as I understand it, applicant here is seeking minor subdivision approval, six bulk variances by my count, the two for proposed lot 16.011, or for lot area and lot width, lot area, they're required, was, this is for the C-zone issue, they're required 130,680 square feet, three acres, in the C-zone, they're proposing 77,606 square feet for lot width. They're required 250 minimum in the C-zone, 150 minimum in the R2-zone, they're proposing 51.55 feet. If I get anything wrong here, feel free to jump in, anybody. So those are the two for 16.011. Proposed lot 16.012, lot area and lot width, lot area, they're proposing 46,983 square feet, where 130,003 acres is required in the C-zone, they're compliant with the R2-zone lot area requirements. Next is for lot width on 16.012, they're, they're proposing 33-point, I thought it was 3-1, but I heard 4-1 during the testimony? Is it 4-1 or 3-1?
4-1.
4-1, okay. 33.41 feet, where 250 feet is the minimum required in the C-zone, and 150 feet is the minimum required in the C, R2-zone. Next, one variance for development within, within a critical area. The ordinance prohibits principal and accessory buildings, parking areas, et cetera, from being located within a critical area. The proposed dwelling on 16.012 is proposed within a critical area. Similarly, another variance for the setback from a critical area, the required 50 feet minimum setback from critical areas in the front and rear yard, 25 feet minimum setback from critical areas and side yards. Again, the dwelling here is basically within those critical areas. I think that's it for variances, as far as conditions go, I know you've got stipulated everything in Mr. Vuch's memo, or Board Engineer, that was dated May 27, 2025, so I won't relist them, yeah. And I just point out to Mr. Skolnik's concern about four different people reviewing it, our Board Engineer and Township Engineer are the same person. Right, and I would ultimately defer to, I'll give it an extra set of eyes for the Board's benefit, but I'll defer to the Township.
He's been known to have split personnel.
That was going to be my job.
So I think we're, we're okay with that one, unless Counsel has any objections here. I'll be gentle, don't you worry.
So just a question.
Sure.
If.
I want to open it up to the Board discussion.
It's more of the variance question. So if that road to the easement is less than 75 feet for both houses, right? So if you look at how the easement runs through to the property line, it's 77.55 feet on drawing five, right? So they're measuring building to lot, right? So if that road does get paved, it would no longer be in conformance with the front yard setback, right? So would that just be grandfathered in based on this, or?
Yeah, it would essentially be a pre-existing, non-performing condition at that point, at least that's my understanding. Right? Yeah. You're good?
Yep, it was more just a clarification question.
Did you have any other?
Oh yeah, there were a few other conditions I picked up in the hearing. I did note that if the driveways were to be gated, the applicant would provide a Knox box for the part, the fire department to use to access both the driveways if needed. What's for them? We want the right-of-way utility easement depicted on the final subdivision plan. The proposed driveways would be reconfigured should the township seek to reconnect the termini, I think that's the plural of terminuses, right, of Delaware Avenue. What else? I know there's a couple other ones. Oh, applicant will provide the copies of the will-serv letters and sketches from NJAW. And I think, I think that was it. I'm leaving something out.
As clarification, because I think it's, the semantics of it have been argued back and forth here today. I think you said the right-of-way easement, I think we went.
Oh, my apologies, yeah, that's my bad.
A roadway easement, and then the utility easement.
Road easement and utility, gotcha, yeah, no, I appreciate the clarification. Where did I write this, here, go back. Pick roadway, any sort of easement. Got it, okay, and that's it. I don't leave anything out, does anyone have any other conditions that, no?
Chairman, we have six voters tonight?
Two, three, four, five, six, yes.
So it's going to be four to approve out of the six.
Okay, what I'd like to do is open it up for Board discussion, so who would like to go first?
I'll go first then. So I, I'm not sure, and again, this may be a little bit of questions, because I'm not sure if I'm yet comfortable. I heard some of these aspects clear to my level of comfort. And it's mainly around, imagine you've got Delaware Ave today, you've got the, the sanitations main that goes through the property. So this is going to be fairly unique, in my opinion. You're going, you've got sanitation, you've got, and going back to the previous discussions about EMS, EMT, access side to side, that was a big deal, so I don't want to lose sight of that either. So I think it's more two general points, I think. One is the accessibility to whether it be the mains, or whether it be the road access to either side of property. So that's, I think it's greatly spoke to the, to the fire. I don't know if the questions are asked in the way I might like to hear the responses. So personally, I'd like to hear a little bit more specificity around how does American Water access sanitation? Is this a detriment? Because now they have technically some sort of mechanical road to drive along, now they're going to go across grass and whatever else, access sewer or mains. EMN, EMS, I'm still concerned about the corner there, so again, it's more about straightening the access between the two. But let me be clear, I like the idea, right? So it's not so much that, it's more about, is this really the best design of any specific points? That's my, and then secondly, on the, the stormwater to the east side, I just wonder if I could just challenge us a little bit on the layout of the house? I think the house, yes, where's the gentleman? I was going to go there. I'm fine, yeah, I think in principle, yeah, I think you've done a good job in trying to articulate this is the best location for the south house. I just wonder if the driveway and the park, car park on that side is going towards east, is still the best location for that? Maybe that could potentially look to come the other way to help filter into more into the conservation, the larger free area and the filtration pond there. So I'd like to challenge that aspect as well. And for me, I'd like to hear a little bit more specificity, yes, that means I'd like to have another discussion, but have very clarity, greater clarity on those points, plus even the easement aspect from the township, to make sure in writing that everybody from EMS, from American Water, from township, in principle, is coming up with the best and most future-proof way to make this application. principle is coming up with the best and most future-proof way to make this application as good as it could possibly be. That would be my request.
So Mr. Hans, just so I have it clear, accessibility to the mains by New Jersey American Water.
Just to make sure.
Water and sewer.
Yes.
You want something in writing, if we can get it, that they've reviewed the plan or the conceptual plan.
Yes.
New Jersey access to...
Can I speak to that? Because I've discussed it with American Water. Some of it is in writing.
You have to speak into the microphone so we can...
Thank you.
Yeah. To the first point with American Water, we've had discussions with them. We've shown them the plans and they've adamantly expressed that a lot of sewer lines in other areas aren't always on paved roads or roadways for access. So the only thing that they requested is no structures are built over the easement. And that is the only rule that they asked us to follow. And that we ensured, you know, that we asked about driveways, cobblestones, mailboxes, other things, and they said all those things, the mailboxes, trying to avoid because of the government issues there. But any roadways or anything else, they will dig through or do what they need to in order of repair, and then they will put back to what the state was that they moved the...
Okay. So you showed them the plan and you went through those points explicitly?
Yep. We tried to be very specific with each group and make sure that we had the best idea in mind for everybody involved. You know, as everybody's been saying here, we're really trying to create the best situation for both the community and creating an environment for ourselves. You know, as I said, I live in town and it's a place that I want to be, so.
Okay. But thank you for going through these extra points. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Mr. Hans, the second point was NJAW access to sanitation. That's really the same thing, right?
Same thing, yeah.
Okay. EMS, and then?
Yeah, EMS, I'm still a little bit hazy on, because I think you asked a very specific point as opposed to the previous concerns where it was through access.
Right. My understanding, and you know, somebody can correct me if I'm incorrect, that there is currently no through access legally that is set. So we're not looking to change that, is all we're looking to do. So we're not now requesting that there's emergency access added. We're not removing it. If that's clear. So with the officials that we did talk to, there was an understanding that we would be able to get to both houses and it doesn't change what is already available to them.
Yeah. I just wonder if this roadway is clear to them, driveway, excuse me, is clear to them, that they can get through the whole property with whatever equipment that they have in those emergency situat-, that's that clarity point, because the angles seem pretty tight to me and it narrows down a bit, so.
And I did share the initial drawing with them and they didn't have concerns about, you know, if they had to drive over some of the grass, that that's just what they normally do.
So you feel confident that you asked those questions and they gave you, and they were confident in the response, whether it's individual access or through access, they could still do what they need to do?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I appreciate clarity.
So just in summary, I mean, are you able to support this application in its current state or are you requesting that more information be provided?
I think I'm going to take it right now. What you have said is the word on record, right?
Yes, testimony. Yes, that's my testimony.
Right. So I'm going to take that for what that is. Then my other point was on the parking lot, for what looks like a parking lot on the south side house.
Right.
Where you could alter that a little bit in any way to move it away, further away from the east boundary? Would that help in any way, shape, or form? Just a question.
Ultimately, the way that that parking lot, driveway is designed is in accordance with the architecture and the garage locations of the structure. What I'll say is when we go for the lot grading plans and there's full architectural drawings and everything, we will do everything in our power to try to stay as far away from the critical slope of the parking lot as possible. But there still has to be access in and out of the garage and maneuverability. So what we're showing is generally what we think it's going to be, but we'll try to push it as far away from that critical slope.
Okay.
I think the question is flipping, it doesn't really help.
Flipping, I think, is not going to help because it's going to add additional impervious coverage to the property. I think we're trying to limit the amount of impervious.
I don't know why it adds, actually add more, to be honest with you, but...
It would, because it lengthens the driveway kind of coming around.
Well, you just move the driveway down. You shift the driveway down. However, the main point is, this is not, this is not, this is not the exact design. You still will go through steps to improve the, as best you can, recognizing concerns about stormwater, impervious coverage, et cetera.
And the board slash township engineer has another chance to review it as part of that application process.
Okay.
What's the change in, what's the change in impervious coverage from what was previously approved? You've talked about the change in critical slope, but what's the change in impervious
Well, I can tell you Delaware Ave going through the property was a thirty-foot wide roadway, the whole length of the section was, plus a five-foot wide sidewalk on one side. So right there, you were over the limit of what a major stormwater property was. And that rough length is like, I think, three hundred and fifty feet for the length of the property. So thirty feet wide by three hundred and fifty feet long.
Ten thousand, roughly.
And then in addition to that, each house was, or the footprints of the houses that we proposed were sixty by forty, so twenty-four hundred square feet each, and there was four of them. And then in addition to that, there was four driveways associated with each lot. And then what wasn't shown was, I think we, not think, we designed the stormwater management so that each lot could get up to seven thousand square feet of impervious on the property. So if people built decks, patios, a shed in the backyard, it was already encompassed. So seven thousand square feet for each lot, plus the road, there's a significant reduction as part of this.
And just to clarify, you've talked about having seven one-acre lots. Based on this site plan now, and really the size of the house on the north side, you're really limited to three at the most, right? Because with the setback requirements, I don't think you can fit another house behind the large house on the north side, right?
I think the answer is there's already been four lots approved on the property.
Right. I'm just saying, point of clarification for what the lawyers has said, that you could have seven, but based on the site configuration now with the house's size...
I think what his point was, and I don't want to speak for you right, but I think what he was saying is that a high-level plan, if you just look at the R-two zone, the lot area requirement is just about an acre, forty-three foot. So if you look at that over the entire property, or specifically the property within the R-two zone, they could get up to seven lots. Now, when you actually get into the engineering and design and layout, no, you can't actually get seven lots.
Right. That's more of my point of just clarifying that actually putting seven lots on this site based on the zoning and the impervious coverage and the runoff and the critical slopes, you can't really get seven on this.
Yes, we were looking at it, we're down to two. I appreciate that.
Right. That was more of a clarification point than...
It was a rhetorical flaring.
Why, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate rhetorical comments after ten o'clock.
Now we get to hear your opinion.
No, I mean, I think it's an improvement from what was previously discussed. You know, I, the emergency services, I think is really the biggest question that's kind of on my mind as well here. But it's been stipulated and talked about, so.
I'll go down.
Yeah, please.
Kind of been stewing on this the whole time, because it's certainly a little odd. But I will say that I'm certainly relying on the professionals' testimony and our own professionals' testimony that this is, and I think I believe you, that I think this is one of the better versions of what could exist. Because I'm like, oh, I maybe, like you mentioned, wouldn't two lots be better, two properties be better over here? Wouldn't this be better shifted down here? So I'm almost like reluctantly agreeing to this proposal based on the representations that have been made, that this is the best design so far. I do wonder why we couldn't just pave the road all the way through, not as a way for people to drive through, still making it look private, but like, it's right there. Like, why not just have it paved, like, on page five, it almost looks like it could just be paved and you would just have entry points to the driveways right there. The shaded part, where it's like crisscrossed?
Yeah, that's the proposed easement for...
So just follow the easement is what you're suggesting.
And just pave it. And you could still have those little entry points to the different driveways and then not have this sharp turn on the west side of Delaware, which emergency services, I think, will have some trouble coming through. So my opinion is kind of like, I don't know why you don't just pave it and still have, like, you know, whatever. But again, same as Tony said, you're representing that emergency services said it's okay. And I kind of feel like if there's an issue down the road, you're going to have to deal with it down that, down the road then and either pave it or restructure it at your own, obviously, like, at your own time and expense and everything. So again, a lot of just like relying on the testimony that's been made, more so than maybe some other applications that we've had. But, you know, you have a right to do what you want on your property within reason and within our approval, so I'm not, so I'm kind of like, I'm reluctantly going to sign off on this. But again, with the stipulations that we've discussed today.
I'm in a similar position, I think, and I think a lot of us are. I was more skeptical before the meeting, I'm less skeptical after the discussion. The, I understand now more of the complications around the cul-de-sac issue as I painted it in my old head when I was sitting and looking at this at home. And I, I can understand how steps could be taken to try to eliminate the potential joyriders that nobody would want going through their property. So I was, the configuration of the driveways really struck me when I first looked at this. And I was trying to understand why there had to be the double connection across the properties and you stated...
Yeah. I can speak to that a little further as well. So the initial goal was, as we stated, one house is going to be ours, the others will be my parents'. So when we were initially looking at how to create the driveways to exit both sides, that's where it ended. And then we said, well, it would be nice that my parents wouldn't have to drive half a mile around the block just to get to our house. So that's the only reason for that additional interconnect. And we've kind of ensured that there's a property line that ends at the end of that connection. So that way, if we do deem that we want to sell the other property, that we could actually close that off or put grass and actually get rid of that connection point. But we can also put in the deed that there is, you know, something involved with an easement for both properties if we decide to continue that. But it was kind of, I don't, I guess, an afterthought in a respect, that it's really two separate houses and the goal of the connection point was really for our family.
And reading our experts' letters to us, I really didn't see anything that was a glaring issue that either of them was raising. So relying on the folks who know more than me gets me to that same point.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for your presentation today. And I guess one question just struck me just now. You make your parents drive a half mile to go around instead of just walk across the yard to come see you? I'll bring them a golf cart. So I've heard the residents speaking about stormwater. Stormwater is very, very important. We know that is a huge, you being a resident here yourself, knowing that is a huge impact within a town of Long Hill. So anything we can do to mitigate, to reduce, to lessen the burden on our neighbors, I can't emphasize it enough, it is an absolute must.
Can I speak to that, actually?
No.
No, I, me and Kelly...
Plus some of your counsel.
The other concern that I have, that's going to open up a little bit of Pandora's Box, because we have not, we have not settled it. And it is the, you want to call it a road easement, a paper road, whatever you want to call it, that's cutting through the property, that has not been resolved. And it's not for us to resolve here, that's going to be at the Township Committee level, because by eliminating that road, you're going to have to create an east-west Delaware Ave, right? I'm not worried about the errant teenager making a wrong-hand turn. They've been around the neighborhood enough, they should know they don't need to go that way. But that, I think, is going to be a point of contention that will have to be addressed, not by us, but by somebody. And it probably would need to have that vacated, and I think that will alleviate some of your problems. The configuration of the driveways, how you have it put, I think it's odd, but you will be living there, it's your property, so I let you deal with that. And I think the fire engines and the EMS people will be driving across your lawn, so you may want to think about that configuration a little bit. So those are my points of concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I very much appreciate that this is a more complicated application than meets the eye. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into trying to improve upon really the original approval that was, gained a lot of attention and was challenging in itself. But there certainly are still valid concerns with this challenging property, but in the end, I believe that you've met at least the conditions that would potentially warrant approval there. So, but it'll all come down to, is there a motion?
Sorry, do you mind if I just ask one quick question? Just to go back to all the points, can we just double-check on conditions for a second? No, not listen, but incorporating the testimony, again, on accessibility and stormwater. In accessibility, we heard that spoken to New Jersey Water, spoken to emergency services, it's an easement, so technically there's still some township responsibility or accountability on this, on this accessibility between the two sides. I just want to make sure it's, the wording is there in the conditions that that is maintained and to the best way possible that accessibility is enabled. So maybe you might have to do a couple of modifications to the layout of the driveway, as an example, right? But with intention that you'll try and make sure it does meet best practice for accessibility. Does that make sense?
Well, and the fact, too, I think we'll go back to, that this is not a paper street.
But it's an easement, so...
It's going to be a very different discussion if this was a official...
Mr. Chair, we are a quarter past the hour. Can we make a motion to extend by fifteen minutes?
I think that would be appropriate, so we could finish the hearing.
So I make a motion to extend to ten forty-five?
Second.
I think it's an all-in-favor.
That's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So my only point is, just thank you for that, just my only point is, I just want to make sure it's as clear as possible that there's acknowledgement that this accessibility has been discussed. There may not be written testimony from New Jersey Water presented, but you've taken the responsibility to do so and you will abide by their guidance or have abided by their guidance as best way possible. So if that means a minor modification at some point, albeit, but...
Yes, that's correct.
Would that be fair?
Subject to the final approval by New Jersey American Water.
Right. Well, I think it's incorporated in what the Board Engineers know, this, all of condition five is that they need to get all their outside agency approvals and that would...
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize. Yeah, it's such an important, personally, important point to emphasize it, not just by the, what's written here. Intent that you've presented and represented, I'd like that to be documented as a condition.
His representations about...
And that he, and if there's a slight modification, whether it be on the grading on the property a little bit, you would do your best possible solutions to meet the best nature for yourself and the township. That's it.
Well, if they needed to do some modifications to get an outside agency approval, that's covered already, basically.
Yeah, it's just an emphasis.
And I appreciate that.
That's all, it's just an emphasizing point.
I can definitely get creative and try to emphasize that.
Thank you. I think it's important for everybody.
I'm sure we'll have a discussion with that, when we go to adopt it.
Thank you.
Any other... Any other clarification, comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, Counselor, we have six. Are you okay with going to a vote now?
I think we feel comfortable voting tonight. We understand you need four affirmative. Okay.
Okay, just give me the opportunity.
No, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that, with the conditions discussed.
Motion to approve, with all stipulated two conditions set forth on the record?
Yes, that's the motion.
That's the motion, okay. Just want to make clear.
Ms. Still?
Uh, yes, approved.
Mr. Hans?
I'll second, I'll second it, right? So now we're voting? Yes, I'll say yes.
Yep, voting. Will we start again?
Yeah, let's start fresh, yeah. So, motion by Ms. Still, second by Mr. Hans. Motion to approve with all stipulated two conditions.
Yeah, I'm taking roll, everybody.
Start, take and roll, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. LaBarrario?
Yes.
Mr. O'Palco?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
I'm gonna abstain.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody for your diligence, and it's important. Does anybody know how the Knicks are doing?
Not well.
I was listening, not looking.
No, they're not good. Yeah, what is that?
Thank you.
He's camping there, oh, yeah.
Yeah, sure, please.
Are we still going?
That's good.
Yeah, we just wanted to do a quick item of business.
Yeah, all right, folks, we're gonna need you, if you don't want to stay, we still have business to do, so.
Yeah, if you would mind, thank you.
We need you to exit the, the chambers. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll wait for him. Gives everyone a chance to flush out.
Sir, I know you've been here all evening, do you have any questions for us?
Here's your last one.
Where's the road go? Is that like township committee thing?
What's that?
The, the Delaware Ave?
Going through that process.
Uh, yeah. That's a, that's a township committee, because they would have to vote on whether or not to keep the road.
But it's not.
It's not.
We don't know.
Depends on who you talk to. I know, I know, I know, that's, that's been the challenge.
In the tax, in the tax.
Regardless if it's a road easement or a paper road, it's still the TC that needs to, township committee that needs to opine on that.
Right, but on the tax maps, it's listed as a utilities, it's not listed as a road.
Yeah, so lots of unkept documents.
Do you have warrant people there?
I don't, we don't know that, how do we know that?
Well, I have a, next to where I live, it's Waywardly Avenue.
Well, sir, you know what, you're gonna have to ask me this question tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before I have to finish your business. So, any questions you have regarding it, contact me tomorrow, and I can help you, and I can guide you as to the appropriate people to talk to.
Okay, so I need to show up for a township committee meeting to say the road needs to be put in?
I don't know.
No, talk to her outside of this meeting.
Yeah, talk to me.
Okay, all right.
Call me or email me.
I'll wait for you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going home after this, so you have to call me tomorrow.
Oh, you don't live here?
I don't live in town. I have a half-hour commute, so you can call, you can call me tomorrow.
So just for the record, we're still on, on the air.
Yes.
And, and just so you know, the next portion, we are not gonna have any public comment.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna turn it over to the last agenda item associated with the orc.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and the oak is, the oak, the orc has been diligently working, the orcs, I should say, have been diligently working on numerous amounts of ordinances that need to be rewritten. So there's one item that we have on the table, which is the H-PAC, it's the renaming, I think it was called committee at one time, it needs to be called.
It was called commission.
Commission, and it needs to be now referred to as advisory committee. So we have the language.
The other way around.
It's the other way around, okay. Well, you have it written correctly, I hope.
Yes.
Thank you. We will check that. So at this point, I want to present that to the board, I don't believe we've voted on that yet, but it's strictly, I thought we did vote on that.
We did vote, but I, I have drafts, and it's so late, and I don't, maybe I'll just pass this out of the ground-floor apartment stuff.
Well, this is ground-floor apartments, we're talking about, right? Now, I'm selling H-PAC.
But I think H-PAC, we told Deborah was ready to go.
Has that gone to, is that on its way to the TC?
I don't remember getting the final version, though.
I felt like we had this two weeks ago.
It was?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So you've connected the doc.
So I can, so I can send that to the TC now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so H-PAC is now going to, we'll send it to the TC for, in two weeks' time, it'll be on their docket. Yeah? Cool.
Actually.
All right. Houses of worship, we're not ready for yet. And then we have ground-floor apartments, so I know we've only extended 20 minutes, I don't want to go over 20 minutes. So if it's, is, is it at a point that we think that we can talk about it for 10 minutes?
Yes, what I, what I, actually, because I think people are kind of fried, what I'll do is I'll pass out the draft, and then I'm gonna pass out some supporting information. Just as you recall, right now, the, you're limited to five joint units per acre, the orc committee or orc recommended 12 joint units per acre. David raised some concerns and suggested that maybe we just take out density, and, and I did some research, and that's what I'll pass out. I think David's approach is best, because I think the villages and hamlets are too different, actually.
Mm-hmm.
The, the lot sizes in the, in Myersville are not huge. Sterling, they're really small, and so when you do 12 units per acre in Sterling, you wind up with like two residential units, you know, which is not really what we want. But if you raise the density across the board, you're gonna wind up probably with unintended consequences in other areas.
So basically, now we've right-sized the scale to the villages and the hamlets as more appropriate.
We're just essentially saying, um, oh, shoot, oh, no, 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 that's right. What we're essentially saying is that the bulk standards are gonna govern the, the shape and so forth of the building, and not try to guess what our appropriate density would be.
Okay. I think that's exactly what you had put forward two weeks ago.
I think that makes most, personally.
But I'll just, I'll pass it around.
Thank you.
The two things, and then, you know, at the next meeting, people can.
That's right, so we have homework to do on this.
Yeah. There's like a lingering.
Yeah.
Sentence in there anyway that didn't fit regardless of this, so I mean, yeah, so I can, thank you for.
But I'd be fine to look at it quickly now, and if it makes sense.
Yeah.
Just get it done. Do you think we could do it, is that a five-minute conversation, or you explained it well enough?
I, I mean, if you, if you're ready to go, you're ready to go. I'm just gonna give everybody a little more of a time.
I think the concept is straightforward.
Definition is included in there, right? From, from what we did last time, yeah.
Don't cross the wire.
Tell us how to read the matrix.
We also, I didn't get the analysis. Oh, I sent it, yeah? No. I sent it, um, yesterday. I think I did. But anyways, you have a hard copy. That's what this is? Okay, perfect, thanks. Sorry, did I mess it up?
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
You're good, thank you. Put down a few board members, maybe that's better.
Liz, it's such a minor change, but we're gonna make MH, M-dash, HM, to make it all. Okay, that's fine. And we're gonna make that change in other ordinances, too. Okay.
Taking out the dash.
Yeah, just to make it like.
Right.
Okay.
We don't like hyphenated names.
I don't know like why that was dashed, but others weren't.
I know.
So how would we read that for the first page, then, just to make sure?
Oh, okay, so I just put the bulk.
In alignment with what you just said.
Yeah, sure, I put the bulk standards for the four zones, just so you have a reference as to, you know, what the minimum lot size, and then on the neck following pages, you'll see it by village, you know, what the lot areas, and this is assuming, this is like a blank analysis, assuming every lot is developable, you know, and has nothing on it. And just to get a sense of the lot sizes in each zone, and if you use 12 joint units per acre, which was the suggested density, what that means in the different villages and zones. So you'll see, in Sterling, it's like the yield is nothing. But then in Myersville, it's a lot.
So, so where do we address the bulk standards in the resolution piece?
You don't, I mean, that's because it's the underlying drawing.
So, okay, so that's what's gonna support this statement. So when they read that, they go, oh, what are my bulk standards, and then I'm gonna go to the bulk standards.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Which is all this.
Which is all this.
Right, which is what's there currently. And just try to, because, and that's how it is now, you know, that, and it's just, it talks about the density and it now, but I think it makes sense to not talk about it.
So just for complete clarification, the very last row on the spreadsheet says Myersville, the acre is three, almost four acres, and if we did 12 per acre, that's 47 units.
Exactly.
On an area that's right there, that's Myersville Circle, and then all of a sudden we'd have a property of 47 units.
Right, as of right, and so, you know, but when you look at the Blues and Sterling, it's like predominantly ones and twos. So through like 12 units per acre in Sterling, it doesn't really matter.
But I would, I would challenge.
Is that the Mount Beesers, right?
Yeah, 47 units.
It could be.
Because that's a big lot.
It's just, it's just based purely on lot size.
Yeah, so whichever one, it could be.
Oh, 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 that's what you can.
No existing conditions.
Oh, I was like, where do we have 47? No, sorry.
That's a point, it can be.
It's existing now.
This is possibly wetlands, this is props, right? None of that is taken into consideration, it's just pure raw data.
Like a gross.
Okay.
Density, gross.
So, so that's the rationale for not including the eight, is what you're saying.
Correct.
When you look at the numbers by math.
If we try to.
It would be a bigger spreadsheet.
We're just gonna wind up.
It would be a bigger spreadsheet.
It'll be too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand the rationale for not putting in the density, and I like driving towards letting the bulk standards, and then anything that's on that property, drive what could actually go there.
That's fine, I mean, I can, if it makes sense, I can add a sentence saying the bulk standards of each zone apply.
Is it necessary, or is it given?
I mean, no, I mean.
It's up to you.
It depends on the reader, right? If, if someone who reads it, are they gonna go to bulk standards to see what that is, or are they just gonna like hyperbole throw something out there?
Well, they should, they should know, but as a precaution, we can add it.
So, so to, 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 to address Joe's concern with people going the wrong way on a dead-end road, I would include something about bulk standards.
You would?
I would.
And what, what, like what? I'm just curious, I don't care, I'm just curious.
It's, it's, if you leave it out, there's an, are, are we trusting that the reader's gonna go to the bulk standards to?
No, no, I, I'm.
You're not saying actually having the bulk standards in the section.
I'm just curious what the, like.
Just refer to the bulk standards.
Okay, yeah.
Just refer to them.
Refer to them.
What I'll say is the bulk standards of each zone, of each, of each respective zone shall apply.
That's it.
You know, and that's it.
Yeah, because you're talking about.
Or villages and hamlets.
You're talking about.
Because we're talking about villages and hamlets.
Yes.
We're not talking about residential zones, we're not talking about any other zone, or what's only listed there.
But isn't that.
Is that implied?
That's already implied, because I think these are all, are always in the.
Okay, look, I can do a point to us, if, I'm ready to vote on it now, and we don't add it, and just take it forward the way it is.
It's up to you guys.
I'm ready, I'm ready to take it forward the way it is.
All right, so, so I'll change the MH, but then, and then, but I can send it to Deb to forward to the TC?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And when's the next time, Deb, that they would, what's the date?
I can get the H-PAC in this one on for June 11th, because they're meeting tomorrow.
So.
In two weeks.
We usually like to have somebody help shepherd or answer questions.
I'd show up.
Okay.
I'll show up.
I'll try to, if not, well, I'll talk to you, but.
Okay, yeah, just ping me.
And we're meeting on June 10th, I think, right? So if anybody comes up with something between.
Yeah.
Well, I, I forget this, this has to go to their agenda by Wednesday 4th.
Okay.
Any earliest.
You're talking about on the fair share.
Oh, right, so is the 10th still the?
We're not meeting on the 10th for the fair share.
Okay, so, well, are we finished with this business, and we'll talk about what other meetings we have?
All right, so, so, yeah, well, we need to make a, a motion to send this, right? So I'd like to make a motion to send, uh, to adopt this ordinance with the suggested change of M-h to just MH.
Yep.
And sorry, did we say that we're gonna mention bulk standards or not?
No.
I'm sorry.
We're implying it because of the fact that we've called out the zones.
Okay. A second?
I second it.
We can do it all in favor?
All in, aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The only other ordinance thing that we have on the table is, if you remember last week, Scott did walk us through the commercial vehicles parking in, overnight parking in residential zones. I sent around the, the worksheet, as well as the Bernard Township version of their ordinance, we all, that we thought was very, very good, Scott thought it was very good, it hit all the marks. The only thing that I saw was missing was commercial trailers, so that would be my only recommendation, is to include commercial trailers, that they should not be parked in, in the front of a, of a property, they should probably, commercial vehicles should not be on, I mean, sorry, commercial trailers.
Are we talking about, what about recreational vehicles?
Didn't say that, I said commercial.
So, um, I just want to make sure if I was following what you were saying, because I'm pict, I was picturing, I mentioned like my dad, who's lived in this town for 40 years, right? He has a pickup truck, and then like, not a big, but like a trailer attached to it, like on a hitch. Would that be like restricted?
What's he towing?
It's just his tools that are like in a.
For business?
That's where, that's where the challenge becomes. If it, if it's personal, recreational, that's fine, commercial trailers, if it could be put in the back of a property, that's what we would want to see, we don't want to see that on the front of a property, or.
Overnight, right.
Overnight, and we're not looking to have, um, uh, commercial vehicles parked in the front of properties. We want to see them hidden in the back on a driveway out of sight.
I just, I'm not even saying this because I'm trying to add, I'm using that as an example, I think you're gonna have the same issue that you were trying to resolve by
by inadvertently, like, making people that live in this town and have been doing something for probably a very long time, all of a sudden be like violating an ordinance. I don't think that's like the, I don't know, like, I, I agree with so much of what we were saying last week about like, there's definitely a limit and a maximum, but I was thinking about it, I was like, oh, I know this person, I know this person, I know this person, I know this, you know what I mean, that have very modest trailers attached to their, I don't know, right? I mean, like, think about anybody that's a contractor, and--
Generally, the trailers can be in the back of a driveway, and you don't see it. But when it's out in the front of a property, kind of got a different look to it.
All right, well--
I'm sure there'll be some folks coming back with some, some opinions and suggestions, and I'm happy to hear the, hear what they are. But I think this is really a TC issue, so here, that's where I'm getting to. So, so I believe this is really a Township Committee issue. When we look at the master plan, we talk about inconsistencies with the storage of commercial storage and commercial vehicles in residential zones. So by, and our ordinance that we currently have conflicts with that, says you're not allowed to have it, can't be in the public right-of-way, you can't overnight park that. So we tried to make some concessions by looking at other ordinances and other towns, to see how did they deal with that problem. And the Bernard Township looked like they have a very reasonable approach to, to deal with this particular matter. We're not trying to hurt anyone, we're not trying to make people pay more money to go store stuff elsewhere. And when I say "we", we're talking about the Township Committee, and I think it's part of the beautification project, that they're the ones who have put this forward to ask us to look at. So if we look at it from a planning board perspective, we have called it out in the master plan that this needs to be addressed. We've seen the ordinance that it conflicts with our master plan. So, the, the way forward is to look at, how can we find the best solution that doesn't hurt people, but addresses the concern that's been raised. So my suggestion would be is to send it back to the TC, saying that there is a conflict in the master plan, you should utilize the Bernard Township as a blueprint, and you should address commercial trailers as well.
Tom, it's Bridgewater, right? It's not Bernard Township.
Sorry, Bridgewater, you're right, you're right. Thank you for that, thank you for that clar, thank you.
You didn't want to give Burns--
Right.
People storm in Bernardsville for no reason.
When that's not what we're talking about.
Tom Jones said, all right, so that would be my recommendation.
I have an additional recommendation based on tonight's testimony. We need to remove the goals and objectives from the ordinance.
I have that noted.
Okay.
I did write that down, it's going to the ORC.
The goals and objectives, what is that?
Their goals--
That's all I have from the ORC.
--started the ordinance ordinance.
Just, I'm just going to like put it on the record that it's going to obviously move forward, that I just don't agree with the trailer.
Wait, one second, one second.
And I'll go to the Township Committee, and I'll--
Teresa, if you're interested, for commercial trailer, is there a difference between one-axle versus two-axle?
I'll have to ask, I don't know.
I was just curious if you'd had--
I'll have to ask, I don't know. But I'll go to the Township Committee and say myself--
I think the TC needs to opine on it, really, okay? We've taken a look at it from a master plan perspective, we've seen there's an inconsistency, we see there's something that needs to be done. I think the TC is doing the right thing by, yes, people received warnings, however, nobody's gotten a ticket, and they paused all of that, so they could do a proper look at that and take the feedback from the residents. Because the goal is not to hurt the residents, but it's to, it's improve what might be seen, thank you, the aesthetics, yes, thank you.
So, are we going to send the draft, any sort of draft resolution, or just points?
What is the mechanism?
Is it a points, or just a draft?
I think that'd be just a simple email.
That's what I think. Is it a simple email back to the Township Committee?
From yourself, Tom?
I can do that, I can do that.
And why don't you send it to Scott--
Have him look at it.
--as our board liaison to the Township Committee. That's how I would--
I'll do that tomorrow.
That's what I would do, too, yeah. And just include, you know, all of us on it.
Yep, I will do that.
So, one point that, in the Bridgewater one, they only talk about tractor-trailers as being prohibited overnight. They don't qualify for the, a small trailer. And when we had our discussion, we were talking about tractor-trailers, the big trailers, big box trailers--
Mm-hmm.
--that we didn't want to see in town, and that's the way the Bridgewater one is written.
We were going to use the weight of the vehicle.
The weight of the vehicle, but not specify on, on the trailers, as the way I thought, we talked about it last week.
Two weeks ago.
And only eliminate tractors and tractor-trailers. Because that's the way they have the prohibition in the Bridgewater ordinance, which seemed to make sense. We've read the whole ordinance, it made pretty good sense about the local guy who works with the truck and wants to do stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And that's his means of making a living. He doesn't use a tractor-trailer to, we don't want that in that, in the driveway.
Correct, correct.
This is what, so, that's what was attached to the pickup, and it was, this is where my dad lives, and it's been here for 40 years. So, it's just an example, and not everybody's